To order and stand for the pledge, if you please. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to a republic where there is chance, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Did we lose him?
Yeah, there he is. Sorry, yeah, you missed the pledge.
You have to do it all by yourself.
I don't know the words yet.
Okay. So we're gonna swear in a new mayor.
Yeah.
Where's Suzanne? There she is. You're on.
Murphy, would you like to come stand there, please? I'm not gonna sit on the floor for you. I, Murphy Barker, do solemnly swear that I will be true and faithful to the town of Fairhaven, and that I will not directly or indirectly do anything injurious to the Constitution or government thereof, so help me God, under the pains and penalties of perjury. Is that yes? That was your allegiance.
I think that was it.
And now is your oath of office. I, Murphy Barker, do solemnly swear I will faithfully execute the office of mayor for one year for the town of Fairhaven, and will, will therein do equal right and justice to all persons to the best good of my judgment and ability according to law, so help me God, under the pains and penalties of perjury. You say I do? Well, congratulations. You'll give me a copy of your oath tomorrow.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Murphy. How, you wanna just give an update on how much you raised and...
Oh, sure, we can talk. Sure, so, yeah, so before we start the reorganization, all total, we have almost fifteen thousand dollars raised over the last two years. Just during the campaign season, we've raised almost four thousand. So it's been, it's been a good, like, five days last week. It was great.
Couple more elections, we'll be there.
Yeah.
Gain it all the time.
Well, every little bit, you know? So, okay, so congratulations, Board of Selectmen, to our, our new member, Carol Egan. I said that right?
That's right.
Super. We have to reorganize at this meeting. First, first order of business is electing a select board chair. Do I have any nominations?
I nominate Bob Richards.
Bob Richards nominated, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, any more nominations? Okay, all in favors, electing Bob Richards as the select board chair, say aye?
Aye.
Okay, that was unanimous. Mr. Richards, congratulations.
Thank you.
We also need to nominate a clerk.
Can I nominate Jeff as clerk?
Any other nominations? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Back at it.
Can I say now? Can I vote now?
Thank you, Jeff.
You can vote now, or you're gonna lose, though. Okay. So that's it for that. We have to set a time and date for the place of the meetings.
Same.
Same. Is everybody okay with that?
Tuesday's every other, yeah, Tuesday's at seven o'clock.
Every other?
Every other Tuesday at seven o'clock.
That's the motion, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Good, good, good. Read up the board rules. That one's...
So in your, in your packets, there was the board rules? There was... I did, I changed one thing. I'm not sure how the board feels, sometimes our, our meetings go a little long. I do have a copy that says the meetings will go till nine o'clock, and I'm not sure how you feel about that. Otherwise, the copy you have says ten.
And he's being nice, not throwing me on the bus, and I also told him that, that a meeting from seven to nine, and we can always go later if we want, but a meeting twice a month, two hours, should be able to get through.
Should?
Sure.
And generally, we do get close to that. I lost mine. What's your, what's your pleasure, folks?
I'll make a motion, we adopt the select board rules and procedure, that's printed.
I'll say it.
Any other comments, questions? I mean, I, I like the rules that say, all the little niceties, I will disagree politely. But that's a good one.
I'll say.
Everybody okay with those rules? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? They are readopted. Designate, we have to designate a newspaper of record, and that is, has been the Valley News, right?
The Free Press.
Oh, the Free Press.
I'll make a motion that we use the Free Press as our newspaper of record.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? This was pretty confident I was gonna be real lucky.
He had five.
Good thinking, good thinkings. Okay, moving right along. Amendments to the agenda. I've got one for executive session for the grievance, for grievance filed.
Personnel?
Personnel.
Does it have to say what kind of grievance?
It's personnel, I mean, it's grievances, grievances. Hitting the ground running, stare right at it.
Starting off with a grievance.
Maybe mostly add that to the agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Approval of the minutes for February twenty-fifth.
Make a motion to be approved.
Second.
Additions, deletions, corrections? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I was staying because I wasn't here.
And we were unanimous, so we're good.
So it's four?
Jay?
Oh, three of us.
Three of us, actually.
There's only three of you, both?
That, that were, that were here.
Oh, I see, okay. Excuse me.
I don't think it matters, anyway.
I think, I think you can vote on it even if you're not there, but it's probably...
It's up to you, doesn't matter.
I'm gonna sneeze in a minute here.
You don't have to put...
Down, point it that way.
Got a tissue.
That doesn't have to be in the minutes. Okay, you all right?
Yeah.
Get back with us.
It'll sneak up on me.
Five minutes for public comment. John?
As we're all aware, we have the coronavirus amongst us, all around us, and I thought it was something that could happen. Joel's in his office, Sam's in there with him, and we have a customer come in and talk with them. Later on, this customer went down to the Cala Clark and Dove, and a couple days later, that person came down with coronavirus, which puts everybody under quarantine. Joel, Sam, the town office personnel. We need to have a plan sometime going forward if that were to happen, because it could also mean that we practically call the folks at the same time.
What, he suggests just a big room that they can all be quarantined in?
Well, how many beds can you get in here? Well, can they work, well, there's...
They can work at home.
There's a conference call tomorrow that Joe and I are gonna hop on that, that anybody can hop on, from the Vermont League of Cities and Towns to discuss just that event.
Well, that's why I'm discussing it now, because I'm aware that's what happens.
So we're trying to get ahead of it and make a plan.
Well, it's just an indirect situation.
Yeah, it is. We can't close the office, I don't, I don't really think that's, that's a...
No, but you would in that situation.
You have to do a deep cleaning, and then you can have somebody come in and...
What I mean, I mean, we can't close, we, we can't prevent people from coming in.
No.
It's, it would be legitimate to ask somebody, if you have a health concern.
You could probably place a sign out front.
I mean, I, we can do that, and we're actually, at, at the place I work, we're considering interviewing people before they come in the door, which is really gonna be kinda sloppy with trucks, truck drivers, but we don't know any other way around, you know? Where have you been, what have you been doing, kinda thing? Because we just don't know, and, you know?
Temperature's important.
Yeah. Fever, whatever.
Would we also utilize our emergency management?
Yeah.
Team, in the, after your call, I would expect that that's probably a, a good group to talk about mitigation plans.
Yeah.
I don't think we're not gonna have to invent it.
Right.
Other people.
Right. And I, the other, the other people doing involved is our insurance companies, too, because they'll probably want some input.
Joe doesn't believe in hand sanitizer, so maybe somebody could donate a little bottle or a bottle.
Can't get it anymore.
They're not really, make your own now.
But don't use vodka.
It's legitimate, I mean, there's a, it's a concern that we have to, you know, that the other end of that story is of, you know, how do we, I mean, it's, we don't need to talk about it tonight very long, but how do we deal with people who have to be quarantined? You've got, you know, how does that work on their vacations, their, their sick leave, you know, everything, because it could easily go over what they have. And, you know, if they're, they're quarantined for two weeks, and then their kid comes home from school, and they've gotta sit with the kid for two weeks, there's a month out of their life, and a month out of their, whatever vacation they have, so it's gonna be difficult.
I think we'd have to be fairly liberal with our policy.
Yeah. Yeah.
Good.
So that conversation's happening tomorrow.
So, whenever that, everybody got the email, I think, from BLCT that there's a, just a conference call from somewhere at the federal level.
So there, there is a conference call tomorrow, and then John and I are also going up, I think, on the ninth, to, to deal with this as well.
That's, that's in there for you.
So, yeah, no, we're, we're, the state, if you go to the, the website, there's not a lot of guidance for folks like us on the ground, so we're trying to gather up. Like Carol said, we don't wanna reinvent the wheel, there, there's information out there, we're, we're just gonna have to implement when time comes.
Sure.
But we'll keep the board updated as we go.
Good.
And it's worth saying that if people know they've been exposed or think they have, you know, be aware and kinda stay out of the office. That helps everybody out, stay out of public places.
Yeah. Hard to believe you have to tell people to wash their hands, but that's the way it is.
Ladies and gentlemen, the duly elected mayor of Fairtown...
Would like to go home.
...tipsy-dozy off. However, he will be back Thursday to talk to Joe.
Perfect.
About our fundraising possibilities. So...
Nailed it.
Thank you so much.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you for coming.
Nice. And the video will be on page.
No coronavirus. No coronavirus. I'll find your phone, it's on there.
This mayor thing is more prevalent than the virus.
I don't think it matters.
We're everywhere.
The virus is picking up.
Yeah. All right, so we're okay with the procedure as, as we're going forward and...
Or we'll get one.
Everybody has to pay attention. Yeah. Want to even say in the Fed? Okay. Any other person, five, five minutes for public comment? Kinda cleared out the room here. Mayor's more popular than us. Uh, okay, department head reports? You're on.
Started up on Scotch Hill, started putting the shoulder on. Then we took up on Glenn, so I guess that's been right around the desk. So I'm up there doing that, and trying to get, trying to get everything done. Sometime along, we gotta start thinking about the trench box, because I gotta, I gotta water leak, and I gotta, I gotta get it taken care of.
Where's that?
On River Street.
Of course it would be.
Didn't they make the decision to go get a trench box?
We haven't yet.
No.
I thought we had the discussion.
In the way, I, I think, I know some of you guys don't want it, I think just to save money would be the way to go, but they're willing to go half.
I just can't see that working.
Well, I mean, everybody's, everybody said that, I don't, the odds of us both leaving it at the same time is ten thousand to one, I mean, it's not, I don't see that whoever ever not had it. I mean, it's gonna be held right here, so it's not like it's down there. They use it, they bring it back, and... I think it would work out.
Can we rent one, to get this project done on River Street?
Oh, I haven't found a place to rent it.
Call Bell.
We have one, right?
We've got a small one.
Do they, they taller?
Well, how deep, where we go, do we know?
I don't know. This one down here, we're nine feet in the ground.
And hotels ours. Can we slope back from that?
Then you're gonna take up the whole road.
That's...
Because every foot, you gotta be a foot and a half water.
How about light film down there? How about, um...
By the time you get nine feet to down, you got a eighteen, twenty-foot hole.
No, 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 use the trench box, though, and then go...
But you still got it.
Three feet out.
You still got the trench back.
How about check with the Ron Fabian? I know he's got a couple over there, he might get a lot of shoes.
That's where I got that slice from him.
You know, maybe he let us, let's, when he gets us one project done, or even make, you know, maybe we can rent one from him for a while, whatever we need to do, until we can make a decision on what we wanna do here. I mean, it's, I have to agree with you about the small trench box, you gotta have something that's high enough so somebody's not gonna get hurt.
I'm gonna go home at night and...
Absolutely, absolutely.
No, I'm not. Not saying to be unsafe.
No.
No, I know.
I, I would give Ron a call, just to see if you could use one for, to get this project here done.
Because I thought the discussion around the trench box was that the new one would be lightweight, easier to, would be high enough to be safe, and we want something that you're gonna use, wanna use, too, that it's, it fits all functions, and the one with, I thought was one of the older types, to have your back, or is that the newer, is that the newer type?
Sam, is that new one a little wider than that one we got?
Yeah, I got it three feet to five feet, so I just...
Yeah, I agree with Jay, do whatever we need to do to go get the work done.
So the, the cost is twelve, eight, sixteen total? In the immortal words of Cindy Adams, where's the money coming from?
And I, I know Aaron put six thousand and seventy on this budget here that I'm working on now, but, and I, I've been working, and Joe and I have been talking, and it's, it's down to about ten thousand dollars of what I've got in there to work with for the rest of the year, which is gonna be tough, because I got manholes that are falling into the sewer...
You wrote that on that list? Does everybody have, or, everybody see that list?
I, I saw the, saw the list, and the only thing I didn't see on the list is this street sweeping that we didn't do last year, I didn't see on the list, is also something that needs to be done.
Well, I mean, I got the room, I, I, that's, that I don't need.
You don't need, okay, this is what you need.
This is what I need.
And for funding that, the Public Works Department has over forty thousand in the reserve account that I'm looking at right here, for twelve, the document of the reserve, first column?
You've got it in there, right?
Have we already?
But your capital plan...
Capital plan, already spent?
Has a plan for it.
Okay, I'm, no, I'm just throwing out that, when you ask where's the money coming from, can I, there's some money?
No, that's where it's gonna have to come from.
But I got a hundred and forty, I got a hundred and forty in my fund balance.
Why, if we can, if we can borrow one from somebody from Ron, or, or McCowsky, or somebody like that, to get through until we start our new budget, and start looking at that way there, and on how we can purchase something, I mean, you gotta have one, there's no questions in my mind that we gotta have one, but if we can get by until first, until we start our new budget, you know?
Have you reached out to Polley to see, have, have you talked to their managers, see if the money's actually?
No, I haven't been, I haven't been part of that conversation.
Well, I gave you the favor that Aaron...
Yeah, Aaron, I do have a piece of...
Aaron talked to everybody, and the town's gonna do with three, and the, the city, or whatever it's called, is gonna do three, so there's their six.
Just sometimes when it comes push to shove, it doesn't actually materialize, so I was just checking to see if that was...
What's plan B?
Right.
I'm with you.
That's the thing, but I've talked to all of them, I mean, they're all for it, there's...
Yep.
Because they, they're in that state, towns, the league there, their insurance, and theirs is gonna be all paid for by the state.
Right.
They make up their grant, but they can't get the money until they buy the purchase, then they will get the money.
They're in passive, and passive is...
It's one of those things where... I mean, I can, I can call, Jay, I can call, because I talked to him.
Just, yeah, just to see if we, it's a possibility for, so we get this project here done, if we got a water leak, we gotta, we gotta take care of the water.
But I got other, I mean, like I said, I got manholes that are just falling right into the sewer.
So that's...
You two drive over on every...
Yeah, I was just gonna bring that, the one on the foot to hill. Well, that one on foot to hill is kind of a...
That's a, I'm gonna have to shut the road down.
That's a bad one, because you got tractor trailers hitting it, you got...
Yeah, I, I gotta, I gotta put a notice up, because I gotta shut the road down.
Because if that, if that collapses into a sewer, you gotta do something different.
Who are you gonna run them on?
How long?
Swamp row or Alvin? For a day or just a day, it's just a day.
I know we're talking about the mutual aid between towns, because I'm, and I'm thinking, and like we call, call Castle and say, are you using it, can, can we borrow it, we've got this right here, why wouldn't, what I, what I'd like to think is towns can work together without actually, and say, yeah, come, come get it, and, and we're not gonna use it, but we need it back by this time right here, while we figure out a plan? That's what towns and mutual aid are supposed to be doing, in my mind, so I, and if it's not them, does Benson have one, does...
Does Castleton have one, as much water work as they do?
They hire it out.
They hire it out?
They hire their own?
There's a recall, you got...
Does Rick have one right now?
He might have a big box, too.
Yeah, you think Castleton?
That's all still...
They hire all their stuff out, so it's not...
It was, it was just a thought, looking at the mutual aid thing, to come up and say, wait a minute, that's one of the things, I would ask towns to work together.
I'm not opposed to that thing.
We got a hydro seater, we run in the house with Castleton on it, they house over there, if we need it, we go and get it.
Okay. I mean, I, I, I was one of the ones who had a lot of concern about sharing, but the more we talk about and everything, if, I, I'm willing to, to move back if that...
Well, I'd like to talk if they needed a truck, I could take a truck down there and help, help. If I need a truck, I would hope they would come up and help me.
I know you would. Right.
So, summarized, we're gonna try to get, try to borrow a ditch box from someone, either of the favor. And in the meantime, we're gonna, we're gonna pursue, I mean, I, what's the consensus of the board, I, I need to say I'm not in favor, but what's the rest of, what's, I mean, there's no need to do it if we're not gonna do it, but if we're gonna do it, let's let him, let these guys figure it out.
Get the, why don't you get a hold of town manager, or whoever you gotta talk to down here, and find out if they're interested in doing this? I know Aaron is.
Right.
But Aaron isn't the person that does, doesn't make the decision.
Right.
So let's find out, before we try to make any decisions here, let's find out how interested they are in doing this, because if they're not gonna be interested, why are we gonna waste a whole bunch of time talking about it?
Exactly. Plus, I think we have enough work, that once we get started doing this, that, I bet we're gonna be using that box quite a bit.
I, I think so, too.
That's to the point you're making, by...
Anyways, let's, let's, let's get the luminaries done, let's see if we can get that project done. You guys figure out what, what, if it'll work with Polley, and then bring it back to us. Is that all right with everybody?
That sounds good.
And then the, the other thing we should talk to you about is, I'm assuming that there isn't money to buy parts for manhole covers and things like that? Is what you're...
At this point, it's not, it's, it's not if we overexpend, it's to a degree at this point. It's how much, it's how much, it's how much you're willing to take out of fund balance at this point. Well, projected, your spending increase between two weeks ago and this week will go over in late May, I'm sorry, late April, we're projected at, right now, to spend about fifty thousand dollars over, coming right out of fund balance. That'll take, well, no, it's even more than that. That'll take your, what's projected to go over will bring your fund balance down to below fifty thousand dollars from a hundred and forty-five thousand. It's not, it's not, it's degrees right now, how much do we wanna spend out of fund balance? If we wanna buy a ditch box, you could do that, if we wanna just buy gravel and rings for the manholes, we can do that, but it's, how much are we gonna do?
But don't we have, don't we have a line item for gravel that's, that hasn't been spent?
It, it may be, but there's twenty-five thousand dollars over spent on equipment.
On equipment already?
Like I told Sam, I don't care, he could buy donuts all day long, as long as his bottom line doesn't go from six hundred thousand to below zero, it's his budget. Once you start getting close to zero and under zero, that's when I step in, that's my job, and at this point, that's where we're at, and not...
So it sounds like we're gonna be like ninety thousand dollars over?
It's gonna be, yeah, it's gonna be about ninety thousand over, it's, it's forty fi- yeah.
And, and if I understand...
That's at the current rate of spending, I mean, if spending slows, it won't be, excuse me, it won't be that much.
That doesn't include labor, our own labor.
That's, that's everything, that includes everything.
To the defense of what Sam and PDW is doing, our infrastructure has gotten pretty, the reason we're doing this, and the reason we did the, the after baby, and our infrastructure is in pretty shit sad shape and needs some, some upgrade, that's why we're talking, going on, I don't know.
Not to the extent of ninety thousand.
The, the point is, is that we didn't spend...
Joe's telling me that I, that I misused my budget, but I've gone through every PO, and there's nothing in there that I didn't buy, that I didn't need. You can laugh while you know. The town is in bad shape, and then you expect me to do nothing to get it back into shape? I gotta spend, you gotta spend money to, to bring the town back into shape. Do you just sat down to the garage and wait for a phone call, because somebody went through a manhole?
No, I don't think, I'm, I'm more of a positive, I'm, I'm more of a positive note, because I'm the one who most of last year whined about Scotch Hill, I think you and your group did a pretty nice job up there by the Roberts Farm, that they haven't been up there filling in that side, and the, where the culvert sunk, got it, so you can come right over the top of that, so thank you, you're, let your team know that you, they did a pretty good job up there. If you have any...
I think we got.
That's the thing, I gotta keep going, I cannot back up. I'm behind the eight ball as it is already, and now I'm headed forward so I can get ahead of the eight ball. And I realize, it's a budget, is a budget and obviously I've overspent.
Well, why is that?
I got things that I can show you that I've spent my money on to make the town better.
Nobody's done that.
Nobody's done that, the problem is if you spend the fund balance, it's taken three to five years to accrue in one shot this year. And by the way, we had that earmark to cover equipment purchases in the capital budget for next year. We've got a pretty big hole.
Gotta make up for it because it's already been spent, or it's already committed, not spent.
But.
No, it hasn't been spent, I don't have to spend this ninety thousand dollars.
That's right.
If you don't want me to do work.
No, no, that's not.
I can take three weeks off.
But at some point, we do have a budget.
We do have a budget.
So it'd be pretty hard to say that we did nothing with, that we do nothing for the rest of the year, right? That's what you're saying.
Well, what do you, if I, if I can't buy stuff, I'm not gonna be able to do my work.
I think, I think what you have to do, I think what we all have to figure out how to do it is, is use as little of that fund balance as possible. Manhole covers, manhole parts and pieces make a lot of sense, it's crazy not to do it. If we, but if we can wait until, if there's things that we can wait for, still keep everybody busy, I mean, there's a, there's a fine line for both, for both of you guys on that. And you guys gotta, you guys, you probably gotta talk every day about that, I really don't know any other way around it. Get the things that are most imperative done, spend as little of that as possible, knowing that when we all get done and that fund balance is at, whatever it ends up being at, let's hope it's more than forty-five, that that means that we've gotta get, the capital budget has gotta be adjusted. There's no other way around, I mean, it's just not, there's, there's just not any ways else to get money but from.
Why the manholes come out of his budget, that sewer, why wouldn't that become out of water sewer budget?
They maintain them, they're the ones that maintain.
I understand it, but still, that's part of the water and sewer.
It is.
It is, but we.
The way we budget.
Yeah, it's just the way it's always been budgeted.
The, the only, the only thing I can charge to the water and sewer is my time, parts and pieces, parts and pieces I can.
Well, that's something we can fix coming up soon.
It's just like working on the cruises that, that.
Right.
That comes out of mine.
Yeah, and that's not right.
That's what, that's what's tough.
These are the, these are the budget things that we have to adjust and, and make, make right, because it doesn't make any sense for you to do the, do the cruises for free, it doesn't make any sense for water and sewer not to pay for manhole stuff if it's, if it's not rain or something like that. So, but if we don't know that's happening, we can't change the budget, we've got a water and sewer budget coming up, we can adjust in there somehow, I would think. You know, it's up, it's up to, I don't know, you've got the frown on your face like you don't like the idea of that.
Oh, no, that's just how I look. No, I think that's a great idea.
I, I agree, you're saying that we, there might be some shifting, that we might be doing better than we thought in some areas, but that's, that's a conversation when we get into the wire.
It happens all the time, I mean, we just gotta make, we gotta adjust the way it is, but I mean, I, I think what's gotta happen is however you guys do it, and it's your guys' day-to-day deal, you gotta spend as little of that, but yet.
Get your work done.
Juggle and do your, and maintain, maintain what we have and inch our way towards June thirtieth.
Twenty, twenty-four thousand over in summer work, about twenty thousand over in winter work.
Which, not surprising.
Three thousand over in winter work salary, and then salt is about twenty thousand over, sand's a little over. So most of that is the winter that you're behind.
The here, winter work salary?
Three thousand.
Three thousand, winter and sand, or salt and sand.
Yeah, there's something.
The summer work salary is twenty-three thousand over too.
How can you be off on salary? I don't understand overtime.
I don't think it's overtime because it's, there's money still in the overtime.
Yeah, it's not overtime, we're transitioning right now to just moving to, to labor lines as opposed to spreading it out across the entire budget for like, a manhole repair or a whatever repair.
It's not inaccurate.
Just to streamline, it's, it's actual, yes.
It's a little bit inaccurate.
It's a little bit inaccurate, every, all labor is going either into winter work or summer, summer work. For example, under public works equipment.
Together, they're correct.
Yeah, they'll, they'll be pretty much flat. So public works equipment is unspent and there's twenty-five thousand, twenty-six thousand dollars there. Just the entire budget is still sitting there for that.
Public work equipment.
That's what I'm saying, there's an equipment.
Equipment salary.
Yeah, salary, zero spent, twenty-six thousand is still sitting there.
Oh, you're saying it's gonna balance out a little bit?
It will.
The entire budget's at ninety-one percent.
That's, that's the.
That's tight.
Yeah.
That, that, okay, I mean, we, we know we're gonna be over, we know we're gonna, now the trick is to be, how much we're gonna be over. And it's, you know, that's incumbent, we've got stuff we gotta do, we got stuff we should do, and you know, you can't, obviously you can't wait till June thirtieth for everything, or July one for everything, so we just have to do. We've got, we've gotta do, we gotta kinda juggle, I don't know any other way around it.
I still got two grants that I gotta, I'll get them back, but I gotta pay for the material to do the grants.
Is there a bunch of income that's coming in to offset some of these costs?
These costs won't be offset.
Okay.
What this is, what this is, this is.
Well, I wonder if there was some from last summer that might offset something here.
Those numbers won't change back, the budget never changes back.
No, but you'll have revenue to account for it.
Like Scott, like Bigelow, I got fifty-eight hundred up there.
It's not the deficit of ninety thousand, potentially.
Potentially.
Okay, say what you said again, sorry.
I said on Bigelow, I got fifty-eight hundred dollars back from the grant that I did up there, so that.
Have we received that already or is it coming?
No, we've already received that.
That's too bad. But, yeah, that's what you're saying, what else do you have, do you anticipate other things or you still got grant work to do?
I still got Scotch Hills, I think that's eleven or twelve thousand dollars up there of work that I gotta do. Bigelow is almost eighteen thousand for culvert that I gotta do.
That's grant work? Can that be deferred until after the?
Well, it's not eighteen thousand dollar materials.
That's, that's a grant.
That's a total, so labor and material.
Labor, which is already some cost.
I just figured it out, I know that, I know that sounds a simple answer, but we don't have any other choice, you know, we're, we're, we're working on borrowed money, which is a bad thing for a town to do. If not borrowed money, then, I don't know if that's the right term or not, it's not borrowed, but it's, it's uncertain that, that the, carry forward is always kind of iffy if I'm not mistaken, I mean, it's not, it's not set in stone, those numbers. I don't know. What, anybody else, I mean, I, I don't know what else to say.
Only that I know it can be a little frustrating for folks, you're doing exactly what is trying to get things done, but just like Joe is doing exactly what he should be doing, saying, wait just a minute, the money's not there, you can't spend money that you didn't account for, so, and, and so that's gonna cause some tense discussions, but we need, we're in the same boat, so we, we, we need to get it done and I'm pretty confident we will, we'll figure it out.
Yeah, if you guys, if you guys can't come to a conclusion over a specific project, I don't have a problem bringing it to us and letting us make a decision being one or two. I hate to do that, I mean, I, that's, you know, we immediately get charged with micromanaging, but, but if that, if it comes to that point, it's, it's about spending money, and that's where we come in, so if you guys can't, if, you know, if you're just added loggerheads and can't, can't say which one is the best way to go, come see us, we'll, we'll be the bad guys, I mean, I.
And I guess I'd like to hear that projection at least once a month from here on out.
Yeah.
Where, where we're gonna end up.
That would be one of my qualms, knowing we're in such tight shape.
I wanna hear it.
I, I think we should treat this as a crisis from this point on, which means we should be a little mini update of what's the plan, how we doing to the plan? What's the plan, how we doing to the plan and not letting.
That should be, yeah, that should be.
We, we almost wanna, wanna put that in because we know that, that will help us manage.
I'd like to know that plan before I add on all this stuff, yeah.
But you, you do have to include all of the grant money that you've gotten in this current budget or going to get.
As a revenue.
Because that's what the audit does, is that subtracts it back.
Yeah.
And it, so it mitigates the overage, so it's not necessarily all overage.
Yeah.
So that at least gets you a little bit closer to a projected.
Let me ask a stupid question that I've never asked before, but. Do we, do you buy bulk and, and like manhole parts, pieces, so you don't buy specifically for a job? And that's a lot cheaper, I'm assuming. Well, you know, maybe we bite the bullet and.
And that, and that's the thing.
We'll put.
These, these covers that, that I, these new covers that I've been buying, they're, they were looking expensive, but they save money on labor.
Are those the?
The guy, the guys did four manholes in a day, which usually would take one if you did it to old-fashioned labor. So I save money on labor, but the materials will go a little, a little higher, you know?
We just gotta, we gotta be, we just gotta tread lightly, that's all, I mean, and I, it may be worth it, it may be worth it to buy it, even though it's more expensive, it may be worth it to buy piece by piece, project by project, I know, I know that doesn't make sense, but it may make sense to get us through this, this mess.
So you.
I don't know, that's an argument that still needs to be made, I guess.
Yeah, I can, I can, I can, I can talk to Paul from FW Web, he treats me pretty good, so I get a little cheaper there.
Do it, you know.
I'll do what I can do, I don't wanna go, I don't wanna spend money that I, that's not my budget, I'm, that's.
Nobody, nobody believes that you do it.
Can you put, can you guys put numbers to these, to this list?
So I know what the dollars and cents were.
And how they interact with your budget, the grant money, how that comes into it, show us a plan or the projection of where we're gonna be for the next meeting, put it on the agenda and give us a little time to talk about it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And anything we get ahead of time so we, so we can, we can do, we can cipher a little bit.
Maybe the plan will be so good, we don't even need to talk about it.
Now there is.
Optimism.
I like it. Okay?
Good.
I think the biggest thing is you guys working together, figuring it out, and I don't mean, I don't mind if you butt heads, it's probably gonna happen, but it just, you guys are the, you guys are the tip of the spear, I mean, if you don't get it right, we're, we're not gonna, so. Anything else, anything else to say?
Okay, so like we talked earlier, John and I are going to a training April ninth, and then tomorrow we're meeting with, I think it's the Feds, White House, White House briefing. Uh, to talk about Corona, so we'll, we'll bring back some information from that. Uh, I wanted to acknowledge Charles DeRoche and I'm not sure if it was his daughter or his granddaughter, Adeline, but they came into town hall last week with five hundred dollars in cash to donate towards the playground behind the school, so we wanna thank them for that.
That's really nice.
It was really nice.
She was, she was cute.
She's his granddaughter.
It's his granddaughter, and my little brother, Ben, also donated five hundred bucks, which thank you to Ben. I tried to print a picture, but it didn't turn out very good, so.
We, we thank the, thank the family.
Yeah, we got. This came from Australia, we got a hundred dollar donation from Australia, I thought that would be fun to see.
Can I have the stamps?
You can. So the Hometown Heroes, this is a new nonprofit organization, they were created to put up the new Vietnam memorial, the new war memorial, it was Vietnam to present. They, they came in to discuss it with the boys selectmen, they wanted to let everybody in town know they're looking to raise nine thousand dollars, it is a nonprofit organization, and all of that money will go right to building their new monument. It doesn't say how to donate though, so if you reach out to us, we can reach out to them.
I believe it's through the Pulse forty-nine.
Yeah, you can get, you can go to. It's not.
It's not through the Pulse, but the people are, right, they're doing it.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, it wasn't very specific, there was a couple of other people that were complaining about the, how that.
They have.
But if somebody wants to, we can figure it out.
Yeah, the slate, the slate has already been donated.
Nice.
From what I understand, from what the speech that she gave us at the Legion, so.
This is Emily?
We already talked about, we're close to fifteen thousand in donations all total, GoFundMe, tech sales, we had three, three of the tech sales redeemed, they paid their taxes, so there's only two up on the docket on the nineteenth.
You said something about a typo, did you get that?
That one's, that one redeemed, I typed, well, I typed Jake instead of Jack, which, it didn't have anything to do with the homeowner, but it was a previous owner, so I didn't know if that counted as a problem or not, but VLCT, they never did respond, so, but now it's not our problem.
Good.
Uh, paving RFP is out, that's due back on the twentieth, the board will see, we're gonna open, we're gonna open those in public on the twenty-third, just so the contractors can see them opened, and the board of selectmen will have their first go at it on March twenty-fourth.
You just did one year or did you do multiple?
Uh, three years. This was the contract that.
Can you forward us the RFP just so we're ready for it?
Yes, and this is, one of the engineers is a RC flyer from Rutland, and he forwarded me their contract, so it was, they've been using it for a while and they really liked it, so we thought we'd give it a go.
And you double checked with somebody on how we'd budget for that?
It's the years.
Okay.
The out years, you mean?
Yeah.
The two more years.
Well, we didn't, we didn't put, we didn't lock it in.
It's just a price.
Yeah.
Yeah, if there's no money, we don't owe them any work. Yeah, it's not.
Like if the fuel, oil, oil goes up or comes down, we get it.
There's a mover?
Yeah. No, yeah, uh, the bike and ped grant, remember the gentleman came in and gave us a presentation about bike lanes downtown? Uh, the bike and ped grant, remember the gentleman came in and gave us a presentation about bike lanes downtown? Um, they went back and reworked that, uh, we need to have a public hearing to finalize that project sometime in April. Uh, USDA and EDA, we're still getting closer, they have a lot of paperwork to get that money, this, this one's tough.
Is that the bridge one?
That's, that's the bridge, and then the USDA said they'd give us 50K for the elevator, so I'm trying to scrape a little bit more money out of them. Uh, fuel tank, more construction, um, the fuel tank here in Town Hall, it's, it's coming on time, construction season. I'm going to ask Jim over in DPW to help me with an RFP on that. I'm going to talk to him tomorrow. Um, and the 1% did fail, 1%, uh, town option tax failed, we did do a recount and it still failed by three. And that is all I have for you.
Questions? Okay. Um, so do we need to, did we need to talk more about the Adams Street? Is that, is that, that's the second line, that all business is?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, the personnel policy is the first thing on the list. There's a lot there.
Would you like me to talk through the highlighted sections, uh, as before? And then I, I thought as a process to, to go through that, we'd go page by page and only hit the highlights and then offer and get a chance to say, would you like to change something or less? So on page 11...
Feel free if anybody has questions.
Just stop and I'll, I'll just keep plowing through. The highlighted areas are what I'm going to concentrate on. So when it looks at, at the eligibility for benefits, the full-time employees, uh, and the town clerk, you have, you have choices on, on this document right here, and after checking, and I think Joe looked this over, and your people did, if there is no line through it, they said, yeah, that the information's good. So, uh, the other one is the part-time employees will receive prorated holiday pay based on the number of hours an employee, uh, is regularly scheduled to work.
Do we have a definite definition of part-time? Uh, does it jive both...
I think it's actually 20 hours.
20, 20 hours and... I, just because I came across this in my own personal life, uh... How, what does that include? And, and how does it jive with the union?
In, in what I plugged in here, I went back to both contracts, the, the police and the Department of Public Works, to see how they handle in the contract. On this one, the verbiage was in, was in the contract? I, I, I believe, I mean, I, I put it here, my biggest question when I did the whole thing was saying, I'm not familiar enough with the town and how we treat part-time employees. Uh, so if anyone has, has sat here and have part-time employees get prorated holiday pay?
Yeah, I, see, I'm, I mean...
I'm not used to having part-time employees get any holiday pay.
Right.
In my, and so, so I'm just saying, but I'm saying, when we look at the contracts that were negotiated, um, I guess what I would ask in, in vetting this is, whatever, whatever representative for the Department of Public Works contract and police, just, just to make sure, I had a draft, and I, I wasn't intimately aware of the Department of Public Works for part-time. So we should validate that one before I just give you an answer on that.
Yeah, I, I...
It's a short...
I don't know how it works, I mean, it... We got, we have a lot of partner, part-time police, which is, which kind of scares me if we're, if we're giving...
I'm, we're not, I'm not looking to give them more than what the contract says.
Do you have definitions for per diem versus part-time? Because I think most FTEs, uh, half-time is 20 hours a week, anything below that is per diem. Anything between, um... Do you look at a two-week schedule, so 80 hours, 72 to 80 is full-time? Anything between, um...
20 and 40.
40 to 72 is part-time, based on the hours you work, and anything below 40 is per diem.
See, I...
Don't know the answer to those questions.
Yeah, it...
I don't, I don't have a contract that intimately, I got, I got to look at the police contract this last year. And part-time always came up and didn't see a good definition.
I think it's 20, I think part-time is, that does sound familiar.
Doesn't, I think it doesn't go over 28.
I thought that was the verbiage, that's what I'm looking for. Here we go, section 416, part-time employees. Uh, because I did look at it. And I highlighted, regular employees who work more than 20 hours per week shall receive benefits on a prorated basis compared with full-time employees unless otherwise specifically provided herein. So we signed a contract that said you're going to get benefits as a part-time employee.
Well, 20 hours are, are not below 20 hours.
20, over 20 hours.
Right, okay.
So that's the reason, that's the reason part-time employees who receive prorated holiday pay, the number of hours employees is written, and we probably should add over 20 hours to that, I, to make it more specific that as we're talking. But I was hoping when I brought the document back was that someone who knew what was negotiated a little better than I, I did would, would go, okay, is this...
Well, that's, that was my question.
That's not a change.
No.
We haven't changed that.
Uh, that was my question.
But the good news about what we're doing in the personnel policy, and also from what we reviewed last meeting, we stated that, that, um, the personnel policy, regardless of what's here, anything, the contract that we have overrides anything in the personnel policy. So it covers both, both ways.
Okay. All right, so we're...
Would you like the 20 hours plugged in here for better clarification on that one? I just want to know what you're looking for, for...
Yeah, I, I, I think we have to, I, you know... I'm just really concerned about, about having to, having to pay even prorated health insurance, uh, you know, all that kind of stuff. It doesn't really say that, and it doesn't say that in the, in the contract, but it does say that there's prorated benefits, right? It doesn't, it doesn't, but it doesn't say what the benefits are, it just says benefits, it doesn't, it doesn't make it specific.
It doesn't say, this one is speaking, and understand where you find it in the document, only speaking to holiday leave. It's not speaking to vacation, personal time. We're talking holiday pay, and that's the only thing this, this...
I'm surprised the union doesn't have definitions of part-time, though, because that could really become messy.
We don't...
It should be in their contract, I would think, somewhere.
That's what he's looking at, right?
Yeah, I don't know. Just anyone I've ever worked with has defined.
Isn't it in the first couple pages, there's definitions?
Yeah, the, the thing of it is, we rarely have any part-time, um...
People.
People, except the summer, the summer health at Moll, and then...
I thought the police department...
And the police department is where we do it.
Look through that thing right there and see, oh, part-time guy.
It says it right here.
My point is they're not.
Yeah.
Right here it says, anyone who works 20 or less are not entitled to any rights or benefits.
Right.
So, that, that's the definition of it.
Yeah.
Right.
20 and 20s.
So I think if we take that line and add a, a greater than 20 hours in there, we, I think...
That will cover that thing.
We don't give you a concern.
All right, well, let's, let's do...
Or you could even say as defined in the contract, and then you know, make sure you're both on the same page.
If it changes the next contract, then we don't have to, we don't have to change this.
So is it 20, 20 and up, or...
21.
21 and up.
20 and up.
20 and up.
Yeah.
Is that where he's at?
He gets paid a holiday?
Some of them, it's prorated.
Prorated.
In my experience, you know, I'm looking at half of the holidays at 20 hours if I go to that, you know, where I'm... But it's not a union contract, so by stretch, long stretch of the...
And even though I didn't highlight the holidays, the holidays were the same in both contracts that we have, and I just plugged it in here.
Yep.
So those are the variable holidays that you see.
Which is generous.
Can I go to page 12?
Yep. All right, yeah.
On page 12, what's highlighted is, on the anniversary day of the hire, new hire shall begin to accrue vacation time each month, but will not be eligible to use it until it is posted on the July 1st or after the probationary period, whichever period is longer. And the reason this is highlighted is I took it right out of the contract that both of them had and plugged it in.
So they get no time off until over a year working? To wait a year until they become eligible?
No, six months.
Six months.
Okay.
Yeah.
And the only thing we're saying is, it won't get, you won't, they won't see it as time off on until after July 1st, it's what the contract says. And it has something to do with how we work in the office.
It's the bookkeeping.
It's the bookkeeping, they, we have the bookkeeper look at it and go, is this a...
That's a long time to wait, yeah.
No, they can, they can use it, like after the six months, yeah.
After six months is the thing. The other thing that was highlighted must be taken in minimum increments when you start talking about full-time employees receive vacation leave pay at the employee's regular rate. Leave must be taken in minimum increments. And it doesn't say what those minimums are, but until you go over to the next page, uh, where there's, at the bottom of the page, where it says use of paid leave, on page 13, eligible employees may use paid leave in increments no smaller than half hour. And that's what's referred to again in the contracts that we went back and validated, that that's how we do it. But just, just so you know, because when you look at it, you might say, so what are the increments when you're reading it over here? It goes to half hour.
It would be a lot simpler if they would consider PTO.
Mm-hmm. Also on page 12, we highlighted that, uh, employees are strongly encouraged to take annual vacation. Request for vacation should be submitted to the employee supervisor as soon as possible, but not less than 48 hours in advance of the requested time. Uh, notice may be waived at the discretion of the town manager. So what they're saying, if you're going to take a day off for vacation, you need two days before you should let your supervisor know you're going to take it off. Anything on page 12?
I'm sorry, I'm a stickler about this stuff, but so that, so you just said a day off, but yet this says, they're encouraged to take an annual vacation, request for vacations should be submitted no less than 48 hours. To me, that's not the same as taking a day off.
Oh, no, what I'm saying is, if they wanted to take a week off with their family, they still would have to get 48 hours notice. I just use an example, the day off.
Okay.
I didn't put that. If they wanted to take two weeks off, you'd need 48 hours. Unlike some places, like my experience has been, one for one. You want to take two weeks off, you better let me know two weeks before you take two weeks off, because I have to make arrangements. But we, that's not what's in the contract here, it's 48 hours.
But in general, they don't have coverage, they don't have to get someone in to cover their position, because there is no such person.
Somebody moves.
Makes it a little simpler.
Unless they test positive for Corona, then...
Okay, there's another one, I, I don't know if that answered your question.
Yeah, it does.
Okay. Uh, page 13, under sick leave, employees will be, will earn eight hours of paid sick leave for every month worked by that employee. Employees may borrow against their own accrual not to exceed 96 hours annually. Once borrowed, employees shall not accrue sick leave for the number of days borrowed sick leave. If employee leaves of the town prior to paying back such borrowed time, the town may deduct such equivalent pay from the employee's final paycheck. Accrued sick leave shall be posted on the employee's pay stub. Sick leave may accumulate up to 480 hours. Again, I took this verbiage right out of the contracts and just plugged it into the spot, the, in this template they gave us. When you see the waiting period, that's the one that I, and then I had, what, what's the practice for probationary employees and stuff? After giving it to the town group to look at it, they said, hey, just, just, just let's lose that, the whole waiting period piece. And I, I agree, I'm looking back, we didn't need to have it there. Uh, so that's why that was there. And again, the one on the bottom, we covered that when you're, when you're taking, uh, paid leave, it, it can be done in no smaller increments than half hour increments. Questions on 13 or changes you'd like?
I disagree with the half hour thing, but that's, I lost that in the union.
Right, they had to get it, it doesn't sound... Page 14, we're down on a carryover paid leave is, is the heading. If an employee does not use all these or her accrued sick leave in his 12-month period, the accrued unused sick leave carries over into the next 12-month period not to exceed 480 hours. And that came, worked through out of the contract. Bereavement leave, employees may be required up to 40 hours paid bereavement leave. And what's covered, the spouse, you know, spouse or child, and all that verbiage that's highlighted, took it right out of the contract and just plugged it in, so I've got the exact language on the next page, on page 15.
So the definition of a close family member is really left open to who defines what that is?
It's, uh...
In the first sentence, under...
Yeah, it kind of...
Related to the death of a close family member.
The, no, no, the, the definitions are kind of on 14.
Yep, the, the definitions, there's, there's A, B, C, and D.
Okay.
That's probably the worst, worst part of the union negotiation I ever talked about. I don't know, how much is a brother worth? That was not fun.
So, and then the on page 15, because we carried that one on over, we'll do the two pages at once. Parental and family leave, uh... Again, I took the stuff from the contract and just pasted it over. The only thing, the one I want to bring your attention to is the paragraph where it says, the town reserves the right to designate any qualifying leave that is granted under this policy as leave under FNLA or the VP FLA. A request for leave must be made to the employee's supervisor. I had a choice there of saying to the town manager, to the supervisor, to the select board, but the fact that it's still sitting there must, supervisor does, that's where the request starts, I guess. I, it's more of a question than a statement, but okay, I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, I feel pretty comfortable with that. We, we recently just had, had a case where an employee went to, straight to their supervisor, and it's worked out really well. It's, it's the person they need to deal with.
Yeah, it's the one you see and work with all the time. So, um, that's 14 and 15, any questions, changes on 14 and 15?
Um, the only thing I, is it, as far as I understand, FMLA is, is, is always unpaid, is that correct?
No, you can choose to use paid vacation time.
Oh, well, okay, okay, yeah, I, I mean, whatever they have for vacation, right?
Choose to be paid or unpaid.
Okay.
But we don't, we don't give them another special, we're going to pay you for these, no.
Okay, great.
Can they use sick time?
Yes.
Yeah, they can use your sick vacation, whatever it is.
Yep.
Okay, yeah.
So when we go on page 16, it's the rest of the verbiage around FMLA. Page 16, Vermont Short Term Leave. And in some cases, you see in this document, I thought it was worthwhile, instead of taking the guidance out, to leave the guidance right in, for you to see.
Yep.
So it says, short-term leave applies to all employees regardless of whether the municipality is covered by the Vermont Parental and Family, or FM, uh, uh, Leave Act, the VP FLA. An employee is eligible for this type of leave if the employee has been employed by the municipality for at least one year for an average of at least 30 hours per week. So, so that was a new one for me, because I used to be talking part-time is 20, but here it's that it uses 30 hours, for some reason or other, but, and so I just said, that's the guidance you're given, it's not what's going to be in the document. In the document down at the bottom of 16, it says, the town may require that leave, including vacation and personal time, be taken in a minimum of half-hour increments, because that's how our payroll works. You had a choice of half hour, hour, half day, and we plugged it in. So are we good with 16? Do, should I, I'm waiting to make sure Carol's going to 16, I'll wait.
If all this is in a union contract, then why can we have a double?
Why do we need the double policy?
That's right.
I do wonder that myself.
Because, because the, our person, twofold in mind, because I absolutely firmly believe we need a personnel policy. We had a personnel policy done many decades ago, and so far outdated, and, and usually, if you get into any form of litigation or mediation with, with the union, you're, you're going to pull that, and I'm embarrassed when I pull the personnel policy up and it's so old and, and what it's referring to, so I'm just saying.
Well, that's the other thing, too, we don't have, we don't, there are people that this, but every time you do a union contract, you've got to change this.
Nope.
No.
Nope, this one is a standalone docket.
It shouldn't have.
No, but there might be a couple... No, but there might be a couple numbers that-
There may, there may be difference, like the half-hour increments, you'd have to do that.
Double checking.
One of the things you'll be seeing in this here is, is this personnel policy can, you can choose, big, at the, at the end, the big wrap-up is, you can choose to have elected officials included under this personnel policy. I'm not sitting here recommending that right now, like, I know when I go a bridge too far. But, but I'm saying that, that it's still, I think Claire has a very good point, that there are some people who are not employees, that it's expectation.
We get prorated holiday pay?
Yeah, you get rated like a pro.
Why would it cover elected officials? We don't get nothing anyways.
Absolutely.
We have zero prorated. You qualify for part-time, you're more than twenty hours of-
The reason I, but I go, the deal with things like harassment.
No, no, I get, I was making light, I apologize.
Sorry, by me, I-
That, that's a good point, that you do need.
I, I'm just, I'm just saying, I, I respectfully feel very strongly that we really need a personnel policy that's- What we were, page sixteen, we were talking about Carol, whether you're good with sixteen. Page seventeen, and this was a new one for me, so I left the guidance in, the criminal victim leave. Uh, it says, you know, the guidance under Vermont law, we must provide, and originally I just didn't say, wow, why, if it's new, why don't you just take it out? Anytime I read something that says, whether you put it in this policy or not, we have to live to it? So, better, better put it in the personnel policy. Under Vermont law, employees must provide unpaid leave to crime victims who have been continuously employed for a period of six months for an average of at least twenty hours per week. Employers must post a notice about the employment protections for crime victims where employees are likely to see it. The Vermont Department of Labor has such posters on its website, and it gives you, so, yeah, so I'm saying, it's the law, we need to live to the law.
Make sure we have posters.
And, and, and it describes underneath it, uh, there. Seventeen, are we good?
Yes.
Yep.
Eighteen, leave of absence without pay may be granted on the discretion of the employer. Employees may continue insurance benefits during the leave. Employees shall pay their respective costs for such benefits. And that came right out of both contracts. But it, there's a nice little feature of the letter, it says, other employee benefits, sick leave, vacation, that stuff that you accrue over time, will not accrue during an unpaid leave period that exceeds five days. So it says, okay, for the first five days, it'll go towards your earning more vacation. After five days, the clock stops.
I was looking at this.
Military leave. I looked at what they had in the sample document, and what you had in the contract was far better language, in my opinion, than what we had, so I took it out, and took it out, the one you had in the contract for, uh, the definition of what you do for military leave. Down at the bottom, it refers to comp time must be earned at a rate not less than one and a half hours for each hour of employment, for which overtime compensation is required by the Fair Labor Standards Act.
Oh, overtime, that's what I meant.
And it's only, yeah, we're not paying, when you do comp time, it's, it's someone's, someone's worked, they need to work more, they've already got the forty hours in, instead of charging us, uh, uh, for time and a half, they can elect through the contracts that we sign, uh, to get comp time. Well, that has to be paid out, they can't lose money, it has to be paid out in the same time and a half, that's what I'm saying. In place of overtime pay, the town, in its discretion, may provide non-accident employees with compensatory time, comp time, subject to the following conditions. And we put in comp, on page nineteen, comp time is earned at a rate of one and a half hours for each hour worked in excess of forty hours actually worked in any work leave. An employee may accrue a maximum of eighty hours of comp time. Any employee who has accrued eighty hours of comp time will be paid overtime compensation for additional overtime hours of work. So it says, if I've got eighty hours of comp time, and I come asking for more, the answer's no, you get paid time and a half. The most you can have is eighty hours, that's what it's spelling out. Are we good on eighteen and nineteen, or do you have some changes you'd like to see? Okay, the last page, twenty. Under, this is under the section for, for employee harassment and discrimination. And there's a place where it said, insert the name and contact information for at least two people with whom internal complaints may be filed. I wanted to put, you had different choices, to do that, I put town manager, and at this time it happens to be Joe Gunter, and town clerk. So if they change, don't have to worry about changing the name, this document would be, it's the town manager and the town clerk, are the contact people that you struggle with harassment or discrimination claim. And, and it also says, you have a right, you don't have to contact either one of them, by the way. Now, you have a right to go right straight to equal employment opportunity or whatever, you can call, you can call, drop a dime on anyone anytime you want, and there will not be any retaliation for doing that.
Do you wanna run that by, because the town clerk is an elected official, and whether that would-
Whether that would jive?
Yeah, if that should be, I just don't know. I mean, it, it's fine with me, but I-
I'd make a, I, I'd make a call to the Vermont League of City and Towns.
Yeah.
Because, because again, I, I look at it, and I'm saying, that's great, that's all my reason I would want the town clerk, because they're not in the reporting structure, and they, they would be looked at as a totally unbiased investigator-
Directly, yeah.
-for the allegations. I also just, why I plugged that one in, and I'm, I'm just telling you wherever I got there. One, one male, one female. I, I want the, to them to be comfortable-
That's not necessarily the case.
Well, no, but I'm just saying, my, my preference-
Today.
My, my, my preference. Now, if, if, in fact, and I'll probably talk myself all to town clerk, if that were to happen, I'd probably come back and say, I still would want, well, I'd want one male, one female. Uh, I just think it's, I don't know, just my opinion. Now, I'll get you a cup of coffee sometimes, but, um-
I, I agree with that, that sometimes people feel more comfortable.
Just they're comfortable, they won't come forward if they don't have it. I try and say, I don't know, there's two things we probably should check. Sounds like on this one here, we need to check with, and I'm looking over New Jersey, if you can tell me, on it, with Vermont League of City and Towns, to see if, if the elected official can be there. And also, Susan willing to, willing to do, I would wanna check with the elected official, and not have them read their name in a, in a document, to make sure that they're willing to fill that function.
That's what I was gonna ask.
I'm going to the cops if that happens. Or the doctor.
So that's the, the pages, and I don't, didn't want to take any more time, and-
Good.
The other thing with that, though, is to make sure that she, not her, but whoever is doing that has the right education to be able to handle it properly.
Properly trained.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, not just-
We don't have, then that's the problem, we don't have a H R department.
Yeah.
But I was gonna ask that too, it, um, just as a side, do we do harassment training year in?
Not since I've been here.
We should.
The insurance company does provide it though.
Yeah, we should do that.
I think it should be something we do.
Because that can, that can catch you very quickly, especially now.
Agreed. I've taken it up here.
Thank you. Keep doing it, it's great, I love having that expertise. Now we got two.
Yeah.
That's really helpful.
I need someone like you.
You guys may be a subcommittee. It may be a point of the sub-
You're getting signed up.
Yeah, voluntold.
Mm-hmm.
Um, Adam Street Bridge.
Um, so the Adam Street Bridge, we had to, to get two grants, we had to increase our match by seventeen thousand seven, seventeen thousand five hundred. Vtrans said we can't use part of the match from the EDA to count as part of the match for them, so glad I called.
We had to increase it by what?
Seventeen thousand five hundred. And that's to get one hundred and seventy-five thousand, that's a ten percent match for Vtrans. Um, so I'm asking the Board of Selectmen for a match to replace the Adam Street Bridge, a total of one hundred and sixty-two thousand seven hundred dollars. This is twenty-six percent of the total cost of the bridge. Um, hundred and low, do, 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 seventy, seventy-three thousand eight hundred comes from the Bridge Replacement Capital Reserve. Fifty-three thousand two fif, two hundred and fifty comes from street and sidewalks, and thirty-five thousand six hundred and fifty will come from the grant match capital reserve fund.
There's thirty-five in that grant match?
There's like ninety-nine in there, yeah, but more than enough.
That's sort of, that's what I was looking at, I never got that far, we got talking-
That's the reason we wanted this.
Yeah.
And as I see Jeff doing some ciphering, this does bring our capital reserve down. This is a lot of money to spend.
It's our bridge.
Yeah, but this, we've been talking for how, how long about?
Forever.
We are, we, before we get, this, is it correct in my assumption that if we do this and prove this, we, we start the wheels to get it done?
The wheels are already turning, they're, they're just, we need to defund a little bit more money.
Right, but I mean, but it's, it's in process of being done.
Yes.
That would be a wonderful thing.
An entertaining motion, somewhat suggested.
On the paperwork, didn't he?
Yes.
He suggested some wording, I don't have it in front of me here.
Do you want to do it? We have that to grant, though?
No.
No.
Okay, I got it.
We're in progress.
I'd like to make a motion to match the Vtrans and EDA grants to replace the Adam Street Bridge with one hundred and sixty-two thousand seven hundred dollars, seventy-three eight hundred to come from the Bridge Replacement Capital Reserve Fund, and fifty-three thousand two hundred and fifty to come from the Streets and Sidewalks Capital Reserve Fund, and thirty-five thousand six hundred and fifty to come from the Grant Match Capital Reserve Fund.
Is there a second?
I need any-
Don't let anybody jump at once.
I'll second it.
Thank you.
I was gonna say, I thought you were gonna ask me to read it, yeah, I don't know if I need to do that.
Discussion.
All this money is there. Yes.
If, I, I'm gonna be honest, so if everything, so we're waiting on Vtrans for the parking lot, for the, and for the lights, if everything comes in, this is really gonna wipe you out.
Have you committed to the lights with Vtrans?
I mean, you can always turn it back if you don't want their money, but if, so everything proposed, you have funding for, yes.
That's in seventeen.
And, and if we, to answer the question, if we needed to prioritize, we could prioritize bridge, lighting, park, we, or whatever, but we could prioritize those three if it-
The problem is, they may not all come, so we can look at them at the same time.
At the same time.
So, so you may get the bridge first, the lights, and then-
Or the lights first, and then-
The lights first.
Okay, I see.
Joe can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think you're still, even if they all went through, based on this, right? Is there more?
No, that's, that list is it.
I think you're still gonna have about fifty thousand in streets and sidewalks and twenty in grant match.
Oh, yeah, there's still-
It doesn't wipe us out.
Doing them all.
I, I, I sound like Doomsday, but yeah, it's just, no, you're right. There's, there's still money there, it's just not as much as we get. It goes from ninety-nine down to twenty, if everything comes through.
Right.
So next budget season, we will be replacing a lot, which did be the end of reserve stuff. Or we will start to replace.
It, it shows-
Haven't got any caps yet.
It puts a spotlight on, all of this stuff we're talking about is infrastructure, and it puts a whole cap on the, the need for funding, infrastructure fund, and that, it's another discussion on the day, but it just shows why.
What bridge does that put back?
That puts back, it's a, it's option four.
Two lane, one lane?
It's a twelve-foot wide bridge.
So one lane?
Is that one lane or two lane? Twelve-foot wide, one lane?
Twelve-foot, that'd be one lane.
It's one, it's one lane, but it-
One lane with water sewer?
Yep.
Is it replacing the water sewer?
Hangers.
It's just the hangers that replace it?
They, they inspected the pipe back in fifteen, I mean, they'll do it again when they get down there, but-
Nineteen fifteen, or, anyway.
Yeah, this is, they're doing it, it's a twelve-foot bridge, they're replacing, the abutments are still solid, it needs some, it has some spalding, and they're gonna refurbish that. The real problem is the deck, they said the deck is much too heavy for what they have there, they're gonna put a lighter deck on it, redo the, the bearings and the abutments, um, and it should be good for another seventy-five years, minimal maintenance costs.
What will the weight rating change on that bridge, if you change the deck?
Uh, there will be no restrictions.
So you, there'll be something.
There's something. Did it have to be twenty-six thousand and ten?
Oh, whatever, well, so I'm gonna say no restrictions, because that's what you think, but maybe there's something I don't know.
Just wanna make sure, we've all been talking about it like it's a bypass route.
If we added deferred traffic, could an eighteen-wheeler gonna go across it?
I just wanna have asked that question and know that the answer is yes.
Um, yes, but I will, I will, I will get the documentation and bring it back.
You're probably, it's twenty-six.
I would think that it'll be up to state specs, whatever the state-
Well, they might not think that it needs to be, be in a side road.
It says the current one is, what, fifteen?
Right. They might just be replacing what's there.
You better check.
I would just ask the question.
Oh, it's a good question, it's a good question.
And then, the only other question is, do you replace that water sewer infrastructure while you're right there, and have the whole thing dug up?
Replace underground?
Do you just, you know, at least that two hundred feet of-
You say, you, you're talking about what the, the life, if we were near the end of the life of that, of that piping going across, and, and you would have to do it, perhaps we put the new bridge in, we'd be right back in the following year or two, do it all at once, is what I hear you saying.
Digging right next to the brand-new abutments, should we just think about, that pipe's probably not unreasonable compared to half a million dollar bridge.
Right.
So replacing piping wasn't part of this? The, the hanger-
We'd have to do that ourselves, if we did.
There, yeah, the grant funding's not there for that.
Okay, never mind.
Well, no.
But get, get a price, and maybe we'll have to pay for it.
It, it may be just something that we do ourselves alongside that, and it, it probably makes a lot of sense unless that stuff is, if it was, like you said, nineteen, or-
It's not, I made that up.
Yeah, twenty fifteen, I mean, if, if it was good then, I don't know when that was put in there, that's all I, when it was last, you know, when it was last new.
It's just a question, I like to ask questions.
They're good questions.
I believe that's a field new section.
It seems like we did that.
I think so.
It didn't look that way, I go by, what's it?
Substation was-
That may be, I mean, we did-
Did we go across like that, though?
I, I don't know, I don't, it seems like we did that a lot.
I don't think it went across.
Because I know, because that's where I caught that manhole that was buried, they didn't bring it to the surface.
Hmm.
That cost me a lot of money.
We have a motion on the floor.
Right.
Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? It sounded unanimous.
Yep.
When do you hear about that?
Vtrans will let us know in May, EDA's working through our application now. We should hear back from them in a month.
Okay.
Vtrans, bad news.
Go ahead.
Um, Vtrans for the parking lot and the lighting, they should be back with us, they have to, by statute, they have to let us know by the end of this month, so we're gonna be-
So we will know, if we have to- So we will know if we have to.
Yeah, all at the same time. Yeah, so hopefully it's good news.
That'd be great.
And that's the entire project, so it's the one sixty-eight. That you're gonna hear about?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Gaze, water bill?
Are these reflected in these numbers?
So, Mr. Rick, does it go by Rick?
Yeah.
Uh, Rick Gay was in last, uh, two weeks ago. Um, he, he felt his water bill was, was too high. It was about thirty thousand gallons in a quarter. A few questions came up. One was how, well, I took it as a question as how he could possibly consume that much water. Um, a question of the cost of that water, potentially a calculation error, and then a possibility of water pressure affecting the, um, the meter readings. Starting with number two, and I, in your packets, you had my three-page write-up. Starting with the water pressure, I reached out to Wayne, Wayne Elliott, the manufacturer, and even our own guys. Uh, there's no way water pressure can affect those, those meters. I, I like to think of it as a, an air gauge for your tire. Your tire will tell you how much pressure, but it won't tell you the volume, right? So you could have a huge tire with twenty pounds of pressure, or you could have a small tire with twenty pounds of pressure, but the volume will be different within those tires. Similar with the wa, so the water meters will tell you how much is flowing by, but it's not gonna read how much pressure's in there. So you could have a thirty thousand gallon volume or one gallon volume, not gonna tell you pressure, not gonna affect it in any way. And I guess that's all I have. If you guys have questions on this particular document.
I, I had, the document that you all have in front of you, it, it went to a number, it started out with increased consumption, looking at increased costs and calculation error. I put A through C, I put down a D or something else. I, I don't say, if you're really doing an investigation, you're looking at everything. Possible reasons for, to the increase on, on the consumption, uh, part right there. I disagree with the statement that, uh, that thirty thousand gallons is the one I, I can give you some, I went back, my logic was saying no. What's in, what's in dispute is the two times thirty thousand came up. So I took the twenty-one or so readings that they took, take those two thirty thousand out, add all the rest of them up, divide by that number, and you come to a usage of twenty-two, uh, not, uh, twenty, twenty-two is the, how do I want to word this? Twenty-two thousand gallons. Eight thousand, eight thousand different, between the two. Now, it doesn't mean, again, it's just I, I look at it through a little different light, wanna give you another sign. Uh, when you're looking down at the middle page, when Mr. Gaze's average bill and the, uh, the calculation that was done there, if you take eight thousand away from the thirty thousand, I come back to, I, I just made a little statement. I'm, I'm not sure if this is a, uh, this statement is what we wanna go with here, uh, because I, again, I threw the, the ones that I still say are in dispute, the thirty thousand, uh, out, and if you use the twenty-two. So anyway, I, I come back to the next one. I'll get to, to the end result, cause I have an alternative proposal. Uh, that, uh, when it talks about the difference might be calculation error, and that in fair haven, the person that spent, that uses one thousand one gallons is charged the same as the person who uses nine hundred and ninety-nine gallons more because we, we use consumption times a thousand. I'm going, hmm, okay. This will, I'm looking at it for the first time, so understand, I'm, I'm looking at going, is that fair? Uh, and then I, my other question came out is, is that a process that every municipality pays a thousand? The answer to the question, by the way, I had a little talk with Joe and said, hey.
You're gonna pay the next time.
What?
Well, you're gonna pay for it next time when it rolls over.
Right.
It, it will catch up with you.
It will.
It's only the first bill.
Right, it's only, it's the sticker shot of the bill, and I'm, I'm, I'm just trying to get to how the gays went two hundred dollars more than usual. How did I get there? Can this explanation?
That's gonna tell you what, why.
I, I looked at that chart, and as I told Joe, that's a reading from after the first of this year, Mr. Gay came to us and said, I'm disputing to the select board the bill I got in September. So that's good, that's information. I don't wanna look at that information. I wanna look at the information from when he actually came and said, I have a problem.
How long did he have that leak?
With, with?
How long did he have the leak?
Right.
Don't know.
No, there, there you go.
But here's, but here's what I'll say. Now, obviously, not that long. If we look at the last, two meetings ago, when we were given the data, I'll find the data, that says, uh.
Does anybody know if you filled the swimming pool up?
No, that I find, filled the swimming pool in November. And, and I, again, the bill came out, the ones in question were November fourteenth, two thousand seventeen, but the, the one he came to you about was November fifth, two thousand nineteen. Okay, that's three months. I'm filling the swi, he's filling the swimming pool for what, September, October?
November?
November? That's.
You think it's cold?
It's possible, but in, in Vermont, in Vermont, I'm looking at it saying, I find it highly unlikely. When I come back again, when you're saying about this leak, how come it only happens when I'm looking, cause everything's sequential here. The rest of the numbers are twenty-one, seventeen, twenty-one. There's a twenty-seven that's, that spiked up, but it spiked up in November again. There's this November billing thing. I'll have no dispute that there's, but then it's twenty-one, twenty-three, twenty. So saying that's his usage. I'm going, I'm still not comfortable. We, I, I hear what you're saying, but I'm going, there's something, why is, if that was, if that leak was there here, uh, it would be right around thirty, right around thirty, twenty-seven, twenty-nine, thirty, twenty-eight, if, if we're saying it continued on.
It could just be a outside faucet he turned on.
But.
I mean, it could be a neighbor coming and turning on your outside faucet and messing with you.
The, the graph that, that Joe gave you, that showed you that first year that he was called, and then it dropped right back down the next day, going, okay, I'm willing to say that something was running there. But that's, again, I'm saying, but that happened after the first year. Are we saying that every November? Cause in, in order to buy in the fact he used thirty, you'd have to say every November, Mr. Gay goes out, turns on a faucet, and runs a bunch of water on the ground for no reason.
Same token.
So, and I'm going.
No, I think Joe's point is, he was trying to say that he could never possibly use that amount of water, but there's a new usage that does support that he, he did use that volume of water in a day, or in a, in a period of time.
And again, I'm, I'm, I hear you, but I'm still saying, that's not what Mr. Gay came to this board and asked to review. He asked to have is the bill of November the fifth reviewed. So I'm, so I'm, so I'm saying, uh, you can, you can say, well, look at this. We have new, we have a new toy. We have new technology. The meters where we can sit and see what the usage is. And it happened after the first year. Great, wonderful. And it'll help us as we decipher these complaints that are coming in about water usage. I'm just sitting back saying, if you're asking me, am I a hundred percent that, that it's, it's right and buy the juice he needs to pay? I'm saying I'm not, uh, there. And, uh, I don't think we, I don't know what the final answer is. I don't think we're there.
That's where Joe's.
I think that I, what I'm recommending.
Middle ground, right?
Nope, well, I don't think it's middle. I think it's, it's not, it's not lenient enough. I, I come back and say, there's still dispute on that thirty, in my mind, there's still doubt in that. I take those outliers and take them out, and on that chart where I took the twenty, twenty-three, twenty-one, twenty-seven, twenty-one, seventeen, twenty-one, eighteen, twenty, twenty-five, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-five, I took all those, divided by the numbers there, and that's why I came up with a usage of twenty-two or an eight thousand difference from what Joe said. Big difference between taking the ninety-three dollars off and when you do the calculation based on the rate. Uh, Joe, I think it came out to a hundred and fifty-something.
It was almost a hundred and sixty dollars.
Almost a hundred and sixty dollars. And I'm saying, with the information I have in front of me, I'm not convinced we, anyone knows, even the gays, what the problem is. But I feel what's fair and equitable is to take that bill of six hundred and whatever, subtract that hundred and sixty, or give them credit, I guess, the front, that hundred and sixty dollars, uh, credit back there and say, we hear you. Not sure we really, we think it looks like everything we have says that it's a usage thing, but given everything the benefit of the doubt, this, this to me, and if someone comes in, John Leuck, I'll, I'll, I'll pick on John, he's not here, but John Leuck comes in and, and that next period and says, I got a problem on my consumption. I could run a similar report like that, go back twenty, take an average, and treat him exactly the same as I treated Mr. Gay.
If you take the highs out?
If I took, if I took what, what was in dispute.
My, my bill on my apartment house was way over the last quarter. I want you to go through and give me money back.
Come and, come and, come to the select board and, uh, we're not here just to look at, uh, look at a meter and say, here's the answer. I'm, also, I.
Every meter.
I look at, I look at our last meeting, and I'll, and I'll get some of my emotion back here on there. But I looked at our last meeting, and we had a person that did nothing, didn't get a plumber, didn't go have their water checked, came in here, and you, and you backed their bill up two hundred and some odd dollars. The person who paid for the plumber did everything you asked for, and you basically said, started with, I think we're right, you're wrong, your bill stays. I think that's wrong. I think it's the wrong answer. And then coming back with a proposal that says, well, okay, I'll kinda figure, take, I'll pay five thousand off. Okay, and you're, the logic of how we get there, I'm not ready to hang my hat on that logic. I'd sooner hang it on the logic of saying, I'm gonna take the indisputed two highs out, uh, and, and go forward. Again, it's just.
Well, he's not really disputing the first thirty thousand. He's just saying.
Never, I had conversations, I had conversations with Mr. Gay. When he did the first thirty thousand, he's kicking himself for not coming in and disputing it, but he's saying, I trust the town, must be right, I'll, I'll pay it. When it happened again, he's saying, wait a minute, I can't afford six hundred dollars.
This is over both meters?
Yes.
This is the old meter that spiked?
It's two different meters. New meter, red thirty, old meter, red thirty.
Yeah, that's the thing that.
That, that's, so it's not the meter?
I hear, I hear you. I'm just coming back saying, what, what the gays are saying is.
He used that much water.
No, but what the gays are saying, no, I didn't. And you're saying, I'm saying, other than the fact that you've got this thing that he says is a flyer, and granted, we've got the answer that says pressure, and I agree, I don't believe pressure after I read that either. There was the one, cause again, I wanna look at.
His gravity fed.
Oh, and I, I'm not disputing, I, I give you the pressure. The other one, I go though with what, I listen to when someone says, these are the things I think might be the problem.
Right.
And one of them he said was, I might at the end of the line, can you check other houses at the end of lines? Cause just because they haven't come in here, there's a lot of people who sit back, aren't happy with your bill, and for whatever reason, don't come here. I encourage them all, all and everyone that, that thinks this wrong. I, not that I'm looking for the work, but I'm saying, I don't want you going around saying that we have a bad system and everything, because I think the new meters are working great. I, I personally, I haven't seen, so.
I think they register slow leaks better than the older worn-out meters.
And then, but then I.
Personal opinion, no fact.
They're, they're a great tool to use for if you have a, a leak, but when we have a.
But we gotta believe them. You know?
I can, I can't, I, I come back and see the reason, the reason.
Can I throw out one?
Go ahead.
I, I'm not opposed to your idea. I just, I guess I'd like, can we have one more quarter of data? Can we not penalize him for not, can we, can we table it for a quarter? And see if there's another spike? Cause if the meter.
It'll be November before.
So I'd have to wait till November.
Table it to November of next year, by what I, by the data that I'm looking at here.
Well, that's what bothers me is it's, it's, it's always November. Why, why? What would, what would make November?
Only thing that tells me is he has friends up for deer.
No, no, wait, wait, just a minute though.
It's in November.
When, when you say it's always November, no.
Friends over for deer.
That is not a true statement.
I know.
If it was November, it's not a true statement.
I'm not sure it is.
November fourth, the two thousand eighteen, his consumption was eighteen. Now, understand why Mr. Gay is sitting here, why Mr. Gay is sitting here saying, you know, if it were November, I would, I would buy into some of the stuff they're saying. It isn't. It was, it was, I'm looking at eleven-fourth, eighteen, seven, seven-twenty-seven, and under the consumption, it says eighteen.
Eleven-fourth, eighteen.
That, that's, that's what I'm looking at.
They have gone on vacation.
He's seventy-eight.
No, I'm.
And it may not, I, I just doesn't make sense why it would be those like.
You, you want the document that I'm looking at?
Yeah, I don't know. I, I don't see an, I, cause most of his seventeen, eighteen, and nineteen were thirty, twenty-seven, and thirty in November bill.
Eleven, I, I can't over there, but, uh, can you pass that one on down there? It's eleven-fourth, highlighted.
The other thing is, you're taking, you're taking a guy's word that his plumber says he doesn't have any. He's paying that plumber. Maybe we should have our own guys.
Isn't it?
Own account.
Own account? Oh, okay. What, what, it's a, you've got two different meters on that?
No. It's the wrong helper.
Oh.
That must've been the other, the other.
That was the other one again? Let me, let me look at the other one. I'm pulling the wrong one out. So we go to the front page, the gays. When I look at the gays, cause I, cause the same argument, no, I'll come back again here, cause I'm starting, eleven-three, two thousand fourteen on the old meter, twenty-three. Eleven-two, two thousand fifteen, twenty-three. Eleven-two, two thousand sixteen, twenty. This is all under consumption. Something squirrely happened around two thousand seventeen. I believe we did water some, I did a little research and, and the same person who's working our sewer did some water upgrade or something. Something happened around that time, because right after that, eleven-fourteen, two thousand seventeen, it went thirty. Then eleven-six, two thousand eighteen, it went twenty-seven. And then eleven-five, the one he's disputing, it went back to thirty. So I'm just saying, when you make, make a, a statement that he's always at thirty, no, I, I don't buy that he's always at thirty.
Let me ask you a question. Do you, do you have the same consumption every quarter on yours?
Pretty close. Mine actually, mine actually went down. My, my water sewer bill actually went down last time, and I watch it, these new meters are made. Watch, like, and anyone that tells me those meters are bad, I'm saying, my personal experience, and I check, recheck, and it also makes me, I'd say my wife's better at saving, uh, saving one, but it makes you be more, more conservative about what, what you do with water. And gets you thinking, but my bill actually went down. I'm just saying, and I don't, I'm just saying that I don't know why there's this anomaly, but if you take out that flyer of the thirties in November, his usage is in the low twenties, and that's why the gays are saying, that's not my usage. And I don't have a good answer. And just saying, just saying, well, the meter says, and I.
Well, we, we kinda gotta go by that.
Yep, we, we, that's what we have, but at the end of the day, when he's saying, the meter's wrong, and here's the reason I'm saying I don't wanna put a stake in the ground right here. There may be a point that I'm with you to put a stake in the ground, and the meter's the meter. We've had enough, and I think it's, it's a basic trust issue with the town, the people in the town, that we know what we're doing when it comes to water and sewer, and I think it's because, we're addressing it, it's because of the old meters got old and they weren't, they weren't reading correctly. We got the new meters coming in, and because we're in this transition, and this timeframe right here is probably a transition, old and new, I'm saying, if I'm gonna give the benefit of the doubt anywhere, I'm leaning towards the taxpayer for the benefit of the doubt, because I wanna call it bill goodwill, call it whatever you want. I think it's the right thing to do. Now, I'm not saying that the, the meter didn't read what it read or anything. I'm just saying, for where we are right now, it feels more like it's the right thing to do. Do I know that, will the gays be happy with a hundred and sixty dollars, cause they're, cause it's still gonna be the highest water bill they paid today, when we deduct that? I don't know, but at least I can defend it, and I can say this is, and I could also, for anyone else who comes in here and says I have a problem, I could, I could treat them pretty fair. I could, I could treat them the same way, and that's why. But I'm, now that said, I'll stop by.
Other people? Anybody else got input?
And what happens if they come in by chance next year and have the same, same usage issue in November?
We'll deal with it. I, I, I would say, we, I, I don't wanna do, uh, we'll deal with it in November, because again, if you come back and say, what really is the problem? At some point, if you're saying, the meter's right, and we're going right there, you have to say, the gays aren't.
Well, my question is too, why'd they wait until March to fill the November bill? Because there's no way that you can go back and find out what went on that month, with what they, what their consumption was. If you're gonna do this, every time somebody's bill goes up, you're gonna have to stand in here and wanna rebate.
The other thing, we do have, the ordinance says if we, it's, it's where you get into the dice-rolling thing where you, you can check the meter, you can have the meter tested, even a new one. I mean, it doesn't say new or old, it just says you can test the meter. But if the meter is good. But if the meter is, is good, which
Hommer pays.
The Hommer pays the entire cost of-
If they request it.
If they, if they request it.
And there hasn't been any reason to mistrust the new meters, correct?
No, they're, they're reading, they're reading higher, but I think they're-
I don't think that's accurate.
You wanna get to shape it on-
No, that's not true either.
Some people, the meter, from, from my end, to answer your question from my end, some people are saying the meters are terrible, and I don't wanna put a new meter in because they're reading so much more water. And I haven't seen that personal experience, but I think Joe shared with us a couple weeks ago, when you had the ups and downs, it looks like these new meters, it's not, they're not that far off. That's why when I see the huge flyer, and the family is so adamant that they didn't use the water, I'm just going-
I heard a lot of families now speaking about, um, they think their water bills are not fair, they're worth way too high, and in a sense, I think if you if you treat someone, um, just to try to be fair and kind, which is a wonderful thing, uh, you're not treating all the rest the same. Who have the same concerns, and, um, so I think it's almost backwards from what it should be, if the meters are accurate, and they're doing the right thing.
I, I watched this board give 200, take 200 and some odd dollars of somebody, and I'm gonna tell you the logic, I'm going, "I hear ya, but I'm going, I don't, I, I," so I, I think it was on a-
I believe that was because the water didn't go through the sewer.
Right, it was evading and it was-
That's why there was, that's, that's the only reason they got any money back. 'Cause that water they used did not go through the sewer. They got paid for the sewer usage.
So in the case of the gays, that the water went 30, went through, and all we know is 30 went through, do we know all 30 went through the sewer? I'll ask you the same question again.
I've asked, already asked, where was the leak?
Where, no, but, but-
Where was the leak?
But show me, did it go through the sewer?
Definitely.
I, I'm not convinced. Again, I, I hear what you're saying, but I-
Makes sense.
I think that, uh, if, if we wanna- If we wanna, if we wanna put our heads out and go forward on this right here, all you're doing is asking for litigation.
I don't think it's that serious, but I, I don't. But I think we, we're kinda being this-
We've got people that are out of touch with how serious water and sewer is.
We've all, we've all competed ourselves several times here, I certainly have. Um, what do you wanna do, folks?
I mean, after taking all that time, after, after taking all the, and, and quite frankly, I don't, I don't want, I don't want Joe to take this the wrong way. When someone comes to us, it means they've already worked with Joe and are not satisfied with the answer. We came to us as a select board to give them an answer. So I'm gonna make, I'm gonna make the motion that we take, and, and with the gays, we use the 22 gallon, and we throw it to the high ones to say, "We're pretty sure, but, but we're not, we're not sure of how, all this, whether it went through the sewer or not. We know it went through the meter, I, I can get there." And that, 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 uh, we take and adjust that November bill by the $160 where he gets the credit, how that process is done. That's, that's the motion I want, wanted to make. And have this behind us so we're not coming back, spending another three months.
One time?
Is this-
This is with the vision.
Is there a second?
Second.
For discussion, discussion. What, we kind of discussed it.
It's one-time abatement, so just, what does happen if it spikes in November?
What happens if it spikes again?
That's my question.
It's been going, it doesn't, it's, it's, there's a lot of different months where it was, it was higher, in 22,000.
Does this set, my question is, does this set a precedent?
Nothing in the record shows it spike anywhere but in that November time.
No, no, my question is, does this set a precedent that when it spikes again in November?
That we would do the same thing?
That we'll do the same thing.
I would not, I would not go out and say that, no.
That's my question.
All, all I'm dealing with is the, the, what was brought to the board was the bill of November. Again, we, sometimes, I, I don't wanna deal in the what is. What was brought to the board was what happened, the bill came in November. And what my, my motion is, is to mitigate that one, and it's done. Anything new, I, I wouldn't wanna tell the gays. If something happened in the future, I don't wanna see you back, because I don't think that would be right either.
We're not saying-
I wouldn't, I wouldn't tell them, I would give them the same answer, because it might be a different set of circumstances. I'd always start, top these circumstances.
Anything else?
Doing this is almost like paying for something that's tired that hits upon. You're opening up a can of worms that you tell is not gonna be able to fix.
Are you abating both the water and sewer portion on this?
When you do, when you do the math, instead of, what you're saying is there's 8,000 gallons. And when you do, you do the usage thing, you take the amount you pay, times that, and you come up with a number, and you add water, sewer, to say, "We feel you didn't use, your, your actual consumption was 22."
And what's the, it's 160?
Well, I, I had the wrong numbers.
It was like 159.75, I rounded it up to 160.
160.
Yeah, just for-
Any other comments?
But publicly, you are admitting that you don't trust the meters.
Right.
I'm, we're, we're not saying we don't trust the meters, we're saying we do not, no, no, we are not. We are saying that we do not know where that water went. I'll tell you that, I trust that water probably went through the meter.
Okay, but you're giving them a rebate from meter, bar, and sewer.
Yes, sir.
So you're saying that you don't trust the meter?
Well, anybody else got anything else? That is, that's, that's new?
I don't have a clue what the motion is here.
The motion is to give a rebate of 160, 60.
To credit that, that, that bill.
To adjust it to one bill by 160.
Yeah, $160 for the November bill.
Okay, we're gonna vote on this.
Yeah.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
No.
Okay.
Sorry.
No, this-
I probably could support that without just abating the sewer portion on that line of thinking. But I'm having a hard time abating the water portion if it went through the meter.
All right.
That's my logic.
So, at this point-
I figured I owed you at least-
At this point, the, uh-
One yes, four no.
Four no. Um- The only other proposal here is, it, while there's, moving, uh-
Joe's?
Joe's proposal was, there's difference, and I, I I don't know.
Glenn's reasoning, that his, his reasoning's a little easier to standardize.
Yeah.
Than Joe's.
If you just debated the sewer, it'd be 110 bucks.
What's your pleasure? Do we wanna do anything else, or do we wanna tell them that they owe us the money?
That's assuming there's a leak in that situation.
Seeing, seeing, seeing how we're, I, I took most of the time on this, I'd like to make a motion that, uh, we evade the sewer for 110.
110.
$110.
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
No.
Same dynamic.
Two yes, three.
I, I just like to-
Well, yes, they're out of here.
Yeah, and one, one thing I wanna go on, how many people sitting at this table pay water and sewer?
I do.
I do.
I pay water.
I do, no, kind of.
I don't pay sewer.
Okay, I just-
I pay water.
Okay.
Well, I'd pay it if it came to my house, I'd do it yesterday.
And I, I would like to point out that my, my house bill does seem to be pretty consistent. But there's just two of us.
Everybody I've talked to, there's been-
You're weight.
I know, I know.
All right.
Glenn, I have to say, I really appreciate the time that you took to look into that and the energy that you had around it. I don't know, this is my first meeting, but I think it's pretty impressive, so thank you for that.
I, I just feel that we, we should advocate just as hard for our taxpayers as we advocate for the misspell. That's, and that's it.
All right, so we're, we're moving on. Um, liquor license.
Okay, we did have one additional liquor license coming in. Second class for max convenience.
Okay, so repeat that, second class?
I just read what's on my paper, it's a second-
You're making a motion?
I'll make a motion for second class for max convenience.
Is there a second?
Yep, second class.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, you're back on the winner's side.
Back on, back on the winner's side. By the way, watching this, for, first, the, the, does everyone know what first, second class, third class, fourth class and permit are? Because I did it after watching the last one, I did a, I did a little research on that.
Couldn't answer that question the other night.
First class is for restaurants, bars, and hotels. Second class are for stores that sell beer, wine, and tobacco. Third class usually goes with first class, which sells liquors along, yeah.
That's what we couldn't answer, is the third class.
Fourth class is for a manufacturer that sells bottles and has tastings. And when we do things like outside eating, you do a permit, not a license, you do an outside permit. So then we'll research that information.
That's good.
No kidding?
Motion, motion to approve a second class-
You really, you, you really need to get, you need to get golfing.
My, my wife said, "I need to get out and going, I need to be in here, 'cause I'm doing too much, I know."
That's the thing of beauty though.
Motion to approve a second class liquor license for Dollar General.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, this is Dollar General, in case anybody can hear that. That, that all you got?
That's all I had to give. There, there are two more sitting out there that haven't come, they're floating out there, but they should be coming in soon.
Okay, Public Works Mutual Aid Agreement.
Yep.
They work on that here.
Yeah.
Stephanie is here from Rutland Regional, uh, if there are questions about the mutual aid agreement.
Couple.
Joe, did the board give the 76 memo?
Uh-
A company's agreement?
Um, I don't know, did I get that?
No, I gave them the agreement.
Yes, the one that said legislative action letter?
Nope.
No? The memo, I think, is too important in terms of explaining the background and the purpose of the agreement. Um, so I brought a copy, I don't know if it's something that you want to reference.
Okay. You wanna just go over the highlights of, of the memo to start?
Sure, sure. So I started, um, as an emergency management planner with the Regional Planning Commission, um, back in July of 2018. And it was in the fall of 2018, when we were, um, at, at one of our emergency management roundtables. The discussion topic, that particular event, was about, uh, resources. And some of the emergency management directors that were in attendance at that roundtable had commented that, um, there used to be a Public Works Mutual Aid Agreement, something similar to the Rutland County Fire Mutual Aid Agreement, um, that they thought had been developed shortly after Irene, but that it's kind of, it had kind of fallen off the radar for most folks, and they were, they were expressing that, um, it was something that is important in the event that there is a, a larger, more complex, um, disaster that hits the region. And you're looking for, uh, mutual aid, or specifically for public works, um, because if you, if you utilize mutual aid during a, an emergency that ends up being declared a federal disaster, you, and there are any expenses involved with providing that aid, it will be very difficult, if near impossible, for you to get reimbursed through FEMA, um, through the Public Assistance Program for that mutual aid without a written agreement. So that was kind of, so it was a need that was brought to the attention of the Regional Planning Commission from local emergency management directors who'd had direct experience with this kind of, um, scenario during tropical storm Irene, and really saw a value to it. So I spent the better part of 2019, um, kind of researching the status of an older agreement that had been developed around 2012. Um, I worked with Vermont Emergency Management to see if they had anything that had been developed at the state level for use by municipalities, and they did not. Um, I vetted the issue with Vermont League of Cities and Towns. And it was through, and they similarly did not have any kind of template available. Um, but it was through them that I learned, um, that their, that Vermont statute really isn't, doesn't address, or doesn't explicitly grant the authority to municipalities themselves to enter into a mutual aid agreement for public works purposes. So the agreement itself, on the first couple of pages, lays out the statutory authority for regional planning commissions to, um, and the phrase that, that they use, I think, is, um, let's see. So it's the third paragraph, it's, "The legislature's granted the authority for regional planning commissions to promote cooperative agreements and coordinate, implement, and administer service agreements amongst, among municipalities." Um, so it's under that statutory authority that this agreement was developed. So the role of the regional planning commission in this agreement is really just to kind of administer it. You know, get it, get it in place, and provide some oversight and, um, I guess, uh, coordination amongst the towns. But during an actual, an event where there would be an aiding and requesting municipality, the, the regional planning commission has no role there. Those kind of, um, requests are, are handled directly at the local level. So I, I, I worked with a, an attorney out of the Burlington area. Um, Brian, Brian Monahan, used to be a staff attorney with Vermont League of Cities and Towns. It's, it's his firm now, Monahan Safer, and something or other, which is in the memo. Um, so worked with an attorney to make sure that the agreement had been legally vetted and, you know, to the best of our abilities, complies with Vermont statute now, and, um, FEMA, FEMA guidance for mutual aid agreements. Um, it is an optional tool, um, available to towns who feel that, you know, they want an additional layer of, of, I guess, protection and structure in the event that there is a large-scale emergency where you kind of, um, exceed your local capacity to address it, and you'd like to request mutual aid. It's not the kind of agreement that you would use under normal operating conditions where you wanna make an arrangement with one of your neighbors to borrow a piece of equipment for some normal routine seasonal maintenance or jobs. It's really intended to be used in emergency disaster kind of situations. The other thing that may be of interest to you guys is, um, the number of towns that are participating. The Rutland Regional Planning Commission covers 27 member towns. And to date, we have, I think, 18 on board. Um, the towns of Benson, Brandon, Chittenden, Danby, Coverton, Ira, Mendon, Middletown, Mount Holly, Mount Tabor, Paul at Pittsburgh, Proctor, Rutland Town, Timney, Wallingford, Wells, and West Rutland. So that's it in a nutshell, um, in terms, as far as the agreement itself. As far as administering it, um, I, I envision it being something that is looked at annually by select boards in conjunction with your local emergency management plan, which is adopted annually. Um, I see it being an annex to that plan.
How would the, uh, memo be incorporated in this? I mean, there's a lot of, that, a lot of, we're, um, saying, you know, we don't, we're not obligated to do this, and that kind of thing, like that, it doesn't say that in here, you're kinda, I mean, it, I don't know, I, I kinda was wondering about town sovereignty here, you know, it's, nobody's telling you to do anything, but they're certainly, I don't know, I just, it's a little, little vague, I think.
Um, I'm pretty sure of the agreement itself.
I, I thought, if you're saying the agreement, if someone requests your help, you don't, because you signed this agreement, don't absolutely have to go. If it would cause some kind of hardship or something, if that's what your-
And that's addressed in the agreement.
Question, question is, am I right? Question, question is, am I right?
Yeah, I, I, I'm not, I'm not sure. You guys administer, what exactly do you, does the Rutland Regional administer, just the?
Isn't your idea just to have a?
The agreement.
That, that's it.
We, we then, we also.
You're the facilitator for this whole thing between everyone. So if something happens with FEMA, something happens big enough that FEMA's involved, it allows us to all be reimbursed.
Correct.
You're, you're just facilitating that.
You have to understand something, if FEMA doesn't step in, they requested your, your services, we're footing the bill for those services.
But you didn't have to go.
Correct, and that is addressed on page four in the agreement. The provision of aid by aiding party is entirely discretionary and it's the ultimate, and the ultimate decision as to whether to render aid to a requested party shall be at the discretion of the aiding official in consultation with the legislative body of the constituent municipality if possible. So that's the very first, so.
Pleasure.
Yeah, it, it is not mandatory, it's that you, you aid, it's, it's entirely discretionary because you may be equally hard hit by the same thing that's hit your neighbor and not have the capacity to help. But when you look at, at the Rutland region and 27 towns, there's a possibility that someone somewhere within this geographic region may be able to provide you with support.
Just, just a question, page seven, it talks about insurance. And I want to, want to look towards the liability piece of it. Here's one that says, "The aiding party shall be responsible for providing insurance to the fullest extent possible, including but not limited to workers' compensation, general liability, excess liability, and any other types of insurance amounts recommended by the Bot League of City Towns, property and casualty fund." And then they refer to, they make the assumption that every, all the towns are members of passive, we're not. So I'm, my, my question would be, it's usually a, a genuine question, what's, what's the liability though? I, I would, uh, if we're not members of passive.
I'm not an attorney and I'm not an insurance carrier. So those are questions you would definitely want to vet with your lawyer and your insurance carrier.
That's the only one on the document that I looked at and I said, "I'm not sure what risk we place for town on this when we do that."
You know, we're not going to, we're not going to be ready to do this today because, we got to have, we got to run in front of our insurance company, make sure everything's hunky dory. It, it, I'm, it's.
Sure. Joe, I just said you guys were talking about it tonight.
Yep.
I said I'd be happy to come over in case you have some questions that I could field for you. I'm not here to give you any hard press, hard sell, it's completely up to you. It is, it's a tool available to you if you choose to use it. Um, and as you've had a chance to maybe think about it some more, if you have more questions, Joe knows how to reach me. But if they are, you know, attorney questions or insurance carrier questions, I'm certainly not qualified to be answering those.
Yeah, no, I, we just have a different insurance company, so, I mean, they're essentially the same coverage, so with a little bit of difference, but.
Were there a number of towns that were not reimbursed in, like Irene, say?
It was an issue for the towns of Mendon and Chittenden.
It's sad that they haven't figured out how to, to deal with that, how they haven't made a mechanism. If, if towns were willing to help each other.
But if, on FEMA, Jeff, you've got to take pictures of everything before you even start the project. And then submit those. So if they did the project without taking pictures, you don't get paid.
Right.
The way people came together in that event.
Yeah.
It's sad that they couldn't.
But let me tell you something, that was all outside work. The towns did their own work, the rest of it was all done by outside people.
A lot of outside people.
I worked on three quarters of it.
Oh, yeah.
And the towns took care of the towns and they didn't.
I'm not saying, and I hear that some of those outside companies had trouble getting paid.
So there is a process, FEMA has a pretty extensive guidance document on mutual aid agreements. I, I'm just, I'm just letting you know.
Putting it together.
If there is a federally declared disaster and there is the exchange of mutual aid and there are expenses involved in that, because sometimes a town can't absorb the financial expenses to go help their neighbor, but are willing to go help their neighbor if they're going to be able to be compensated for equipment, time, materials, or staff time. All I'm saying is that if you have a written agreement, you know, the, the ability for you, for FEMA to find that an eligible expense is at least on the table.
Significantly.
If you don't have an agreement, it will not be found an eligible expense.
Then let me ask a question, if that's the situation, how does anybody else gets paid when he worked on a federal disaster? They don't have an agreement with everybody when, I worked, Irene for two years. And, and I didn't have an agreement with anybody, but I got paid every week.
Right. Irene was a unique.
Wasn't with the town, no.
Irene was a really unique circumstance. That was, you know, a catastrophic event. I think FEMA gave a lot of leniency from what I've heard. As I said, I started this conversation with saying I joined the Regional Planning Commission in July of 2018. So I wasn't involved with FEMA or any of the Irene issues in a capacity of the Regional Planning Commission. So I can't, I can't speak to.
There's also the fact that if, if we were to go somewhere and work under FEMA, it could take us up to two years to get paid from FEMA. And this, this town cannot afford.
Well, see, I, I don't think, I, I think what this is, I'm not, I don't think this is a nefarious, um, document. I think it, it gives us the opportunity to say yes or no, and, and if we do say yes, we're going to, we have a better chance of getting paid. That's about the only thing that's.
But you might wait two years.
Oh, you're going to probably anyway.
And I'm assuming we're going to go up there anyway.
If we pay, if we pay $20,000 for equipment and employment to go out to another town and work.
We would do that anyway.
I, that's what I'm assuming. That's what I'm assuming is why would you not do it? If they needed it.
Think about it, I mean, I don't have a problem, if Benson needed help or West Haven needed help, we're right here, you go help them. But to go over to Melton, take your equipment over your, over to Melton to do something?
You may or may not, you may say no.
Yeah.
But anyways, the, the bottom line is, is we got to run this, we got to run this by our insurance company, make sure we, and have this discussion again.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you for the, thank you for the, yeah, thank you for the memo.
We appreciate your time.
No problem.
So we will, you will look at that and we will discuss it again the next time, right?
Yep.
I don't see, it's a big deal, I think, some of the things scared me.
Let me tell you what scares me the worst, the planning commission or something to do with it.
Yeah, that's what, that's exactly what scared me, to be honest with you.
We've never gotten in at the house with it.
We certainly didn't get anything from.
Unless, unless something really changes, I would vote against this.
All right, I'm not, I'm not there, but, um, definitely, that, well, that was the thing, is that. Their, their coverage of the, the, what do they call it? Administering this was what I was worried about. But I think the, I think the memo was a little bit more helpful there. Maybe needs to be incorporated in here, but. Okay, let's move on, we will hear more of that. What?
I don't think they're really going to do much with it at all.
No, I think they just.
It's just there.
They're just going to administer the document.
It's one of the tools, they want to put a tool in the toolbox.
Anyway.
Board appointments. We are, uh.
Where do we start?
We're over our nine o'clock.
Keep, keep going, you're doing that.
Oh, that clock says eight fifteen.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm looking at that clock. We're not close to early, we've been here long.
Okay, emergency management coordinator is Jim Heller.
Yep.
Man, motion.
Do you want to do, you want to just do them all together?
Can we do them all together or do the individual motions?
Yeah, do individual.
Let's do it individual.
Motion to appoint Jim Heller, emergency manager.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I'm emergency management coordinator, sorry.
Fence viewers, we got Claire Stanley and two.
Look at it or not, I got called once.
There's three spots, is there? Anybody else want to be one?
Anybody else want to be one? Any volunteers out in the crowd?
Motion to appoint Claire Stanley, fence viewer.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
You're on your own, till you can recruit some people.
It's a tough job, I'll tell you.
Fire Department slate of officers is a little more important. Jim Heller, chief, Tom Fucile, assistant chief, and Don Proctor, assistant chief.
So move. And that was presented by them, right?
Yeah. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. We talked about the Adams Street Bridge. Personal policy, we did. We're nowhere near capping funds. And Louis Lane, do you have any, anything else?
I, I don't, I sent an email, I was going to bring it this time, but I'll, I'll bring some in the rain for next time.
Yeah, they should, I think Jake will be back sometime in April anyway, so.
Yeah, because it is, I think there's two more houses going in there.
Is it really? Huh. Well, it'd be a good time to upgrade the road. Okay, board roundtable.
Can, before we leave.
Sure.
I'd, I'd like to, in the parking lot, add an item, uh, and that's alternatives to replace the 1% option tax that got voted down with three votes, because we still need, doesn't fix the payment of the sewer problem, and so we need to get it out of our radar.
I, I question whether that, and I could be all wet on this, but whether that went down due to misinformation, lack of information, more than people actually being opposed to it, I just.
I agree with you.
A thought, um, and whether that, we should do a little more PR, maybe?
I agree.
And maybe put it head out in November or potentially with the school who's going to do a ballot again, maybe we could take it back.
We, we, I thought about that too.
Three votes is.
I'm, I'm sensitive to.
Towns on the fence.
There were, there were, this group was almost right down the middle. And I want to say, I heard you when you said no. But, but at the same time, there might be some information, but I want to understand ones who voted no, why they voted no.
I think there, there were people at town meeting that expressly said to me after or during the meeting that we just didn't know what it was.
Oh, okay.
So if there were four or five people at town, of the 27 at town meeting, there were probably a bigger percentage.
I think a lot of it was lack of information. I mean, it's not a secret, we all know, you know, private business in town, there's only a handful left.
Yep.
And the worry about being put out of business when you only have a percentage of margin that's that big is scary. But then to find out that, you know, clothing was going to be one of the things that wasn't taxed, um, wasn't known to the people, you know, specifically around Derfies that, so obviously there was a lot of missing information.
So I think there's a fair chance that it might pass with a small PR campaign.
If it doesn't require, because the only other alternative I was thinking is to go put some proposals to see what, putting $157,785.93, that's what we would have got from the 1% option tax per year to pay down 72%. Theoretically, but I'm saying to pay down, these are hard numbers, to pay down the 72% of the six and a half million dollar bond, you come up with what your taxes are going to have to come up, to come up with that same kind of money and put it next to it and say, I mean, which way do you want to go? It becomes even, it becomes even plainer.
It'd also show what your basic rate is going to go on a sewer if we don't, if this doesn't go through.
Eighty-eight dollars versus 1630 right now.
Significant.
We know it's at least.
But I, I think it's. I think it's on us for not putting it out there.
I think, I don't think, I don't think that's enough information.
I, I think, I think you have to be very careful about advocating.
You put it in the bill and stuff, but it's not enough.
To Jeff's point, so I intentionally didn't do any, uh, any kind of outreach on this one, because I know there was kind of a, the board wasn't 100% sure about it, even though they put it on the ballot.
We were, we were split. We were split as a board on whether to do it.
Yeah, so, and that's the reason, it was intentional not to do any outreach.
Well, the, the other, the other end of that is, is, in a general sense, I don't think the legislative body should be spending money advertising their side of the store.
Well, I don't know that we need to do that, I guess we could just talk about it on camera and say, you know, eighty-eight dollars.
Whatever you do, whatever you do in private is, is your own, but I don't think.
I didn't, I didn't actively go out because I'm saying, same as, it's your time, I'm saying, okay, here, I feel conflicted and I feel very strongly as, as a taxpayer that the 1% option tax is the only way I see forward to keeping, keeping the sewer base rate from going to 88 dollars, even with 1% option tax.
I think it's 60.
The documents, the documents that I have that were given. We, after, it was $34 if you approved the 1%. It goes from 1630 to 34, it went to 88 dollars in the document.
First of all, 66, and then it dropped down to, to in the 50s.
Maybe it was 66.
I have a, I have a document that I didn't have with me.
It doesn't matter, still.
Either way, I'm not advocating that we take out newspaper ads or anything like that, I'm just saying maybe we have a hearing on 1%.
Have a public hearing.
And we talk about.
Right, right, for, for right now.
I did not mean.
On, on the. For, for right now on the park.
But I don't think it's wrong either.
To be put there so we talk again, because I think you're right, there's some opportunities, whether when they vote for the next coup bond, November when they vote, or even.
And, and that's the other thing.
Because if we don't, we have to go up with an alternative.
We do have.
Like you, you don't have business, you're going to have another 1% added on to your sales.
If I was going to to mass.
You have to add to the, to the consumers.
Do you realize 1% is a dollar on a hundred?
If I went, if I, if I went.
It's a dollar on a hundred.
I go across the border and it's a, I think they have a 7% sales tax, we have a 6% sales tax. If you're saying if the 1% option, they'd be saying 7% whether, e- either way, and I think, I look around down, I see all the New York cars here, we get, all those New York cars are not going to stay the other side of the border because we put a 1% option. But that's me.
They've come here for other reasons.
I don't.
Gas is not included.
Gas isn't included.
Rutland Town has a, um, I think Rutland City's got a different one than that, but they have a 2% on theirs.
Right.
And they didn't stop any business over there.
I don't, you can't have 2%, can you?
I don't know.
They have, they have a city tax of 2%.
It's the only way they're able, we had the infrastructure discussion earlier, it's, it's another tool and even, to deal with infrastructure, it was just a thought.
Let's, let's talk about it, let's talk about it at the board meeting, and then we'll do.
Yes, I just wanted to hear for a board meeting.
There does need to be a message, though, that this place cares about the businesses in town.
Oh, yeah.
In the future, which that just wasn't really part of it. I think that would help get it to pass if we brought that more out.
I, I believe the reason there was a high vote is because people do support, because the businesses are fantastic for supporting the town and what they do, and the last thing I want to hear is, I, I want the business to feel is, we don't support the businesses. Absolutely not.
If you had a high vote because of the $60 million vote.
No, no.
That's why.
That's cool, but that's there, a lot of people were. Okay, now, now we can go to the roundtable. And I don't have, I've taken enough airtime tonight, I'm sorry.
Can I add something?
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I, I obviously travel in a circle of older people, but, um, the, the actual article didn't state what it was for. It said for improvement of infrastructure. And the people that I talked to, it says 1%, what was the name of the tax called?
Option tax.
Option tax. And they didn't read any further than that. Infrastructure, what does that mean? I think if it had read, because I heard you say that it was going to be for the sewer treatment plant, and when the sewer treatment bond was paid, that was, tax was gone.
Goes away.
And, and.
Will be long gone.
Could go away.
Yeah.
I'm not promising.
The person sitting at this table will be here when that bond's.
When that bond's paid.
I hope not.
I, I don't think, I don't think that would matter, but if it had read that it was for, um, helping to pay for the sewer treatment plant, it would pass through the numbers.
Putting that in on the vote. It gets a little dicey, what you can actually put in there for language.
But, but once again, that's the information part of it, I, I agree with that.
But that's what you're, that's what you're putting it on for.
Yeah, yeah.
You're putting it on for, so you're not telling them.
We left it open ended on purpose, so that we could move that.
In case, in case we needed to put money into other. In case, in case we needed to put money into other infrastructure, we didn't want to earmark it strictly, it was to deal with the sewer, but we said, you know something, we're not that good in looking in that crystal ball and say, oh, what happened if you had some other major infrastructure failure in town and you needed to shift some funding?
If you do that, are you gonna, are you gonna, if you take.
But you're not gonna take it away.
If you take that money, if that's supposed to be going, and we're planning on that for your sewer.
You've made your budget, you're not.
Made your budget, how are you gonna take that money and put us on?
I don't see it moving either, and then I see, I see thirty years down the line, aren't you gonna have to do another infrastructure improvement? It's, I think it's short sight, it's just wrong to think that it's really gonna go away.
Right, I like it.
But that's right now, that's the intention.
Yeah.
Yeah, by this board.
Yep.
By this, we'll not be there thirty days.
Theoretically.
Probably.
I'd be a hundred and one.
You could do it, you.
I could tell.
All right.
I pass him.
We will talk about this again.
All I had was the one percent, I wanted to bring that back on the ballot.
What, what the roundtable is, is just, I think I explained that to you, it's just if, stuff that you wanna get out that somebody may have talked to you about, or you, and then essentially we talk about it, get it, get it on the board, in front of the board, and then if we need to put it on the agenda, we put it on the agenda on a future date, so.
No, I'm good right now.
Okay.
I had two things, one of them is, uh, is there a holdup on the Mechanic Street grant because we didn't pay or something? Is that the contractor deal?
No, that, well, that's, that's the right project, I talked to her today, um, new program manager, I talked to her today, she said it's with finance, and if we don't hear back by next week, to call her and she'll get it moved again.
Okay.
Yeah, it's been sitting there for at least a month now.
Yeah, January sixth.
Oh, okay, so a couple of ones. Yeah, no, we've been, we've been on them to pay that.
On the lines of revenue and balance in our budget, the only way to get more tax revenue is to grand list go up, really, you know, to have more taxable value. And we always talk about tax abatement on a large scale, you know, we, we're looking for the silver bullet business to move into town that's gonna be the be all, end all, and solve our problems. Can we create a program where people put money into their houses and get stabilization for a couple of years or something? You know, looking at long-term gain, you know, leave a little on the table short-term to get people to put like maybe over ten thousand into their house and just slowly bump that list up. I, I was here in the town office and there was somebody talking about, they were here for tax sales, but they were talking about flipping houses and trying to get the town to be better. You know, and if, if, even if it was just small amounts like that, they still add up on the grand list. I don't know the mechanism to make it work properly, but I wonder if that's something we should.
Push as long as you don't lose the tax base that you've got.
No, I'm not saying it be anything that you had.
Yeah, if, if the house is in for a hundred and twenty thousand dollars.
And they do thirty thousand bucks.
You still leave it for one twenty and give them a break on the next two years or so.
But give them like two, three years without an increase in taxes.
For example, you talk like on Fourth Street, there are two houses, they're doing, they're doing significant upgrade inside and out. I gotta believe that when they're done, the tax on those.
The only hiccup is, some of those things don't need a permit, right? Like, so you may, it may be a double-edged sword, so.
A new furnace wouldn't really increase your.
Your value.
Value. But there's efficiency Vermont for that.
Anyway, it's just a thought, I was just gonna put it in Joe's lap. Sorry, Joe.
I like that idea, I think it's great.
It's just, you know, small things, small changes, we might be able to get a little bit of.
My home, my hometown in Michigan did this, and they would sell lots, and if you built a house, stick built house, you got five years no taxes, or reduced rate taxes.
Reduced rate.
You know what, it really incentivized nice new homes to go up.
Right.
Castleton did that years ago, they, you paid the tax on the property that you bought, but you had three years on your house.
Yep.
Because then, and there's some builders out there that may did very well on it, you know.
Even five years, it's gonna, we're gonna be here a long time, town's not going anywhere.
Yeah, as long as you don't lose your basic, your base.
Exactly.
You know, your grand list of whatever it is now.
And maybe the people think they're gonna flip the house, whatever, but it doesn't matter, in five years it comes on, you start gaining.
On that same note, can we, can we also consider penalizing, probably not the right word, but penalizing the property owners who are allowing a piece of property to go into.
Disrepair.
Disrepair. And because that's not only bringing down that property, but it's bringing down all the properties around it.
Oh, that's.
I'm more of a carrot, you're the stick, that's okay.
Nice, nice way to put it.
And I'm the commie, and I'm saying that, that you're penalizing somebody for being poor.
I don't know, I'm, I'm talking about properties that are not, there's no end, commercial properties in town that are, there's no end to property that's intended to disrepair for no other reason than they have no incentive to get that property. I wasn't really talking about houses, I was really talking about commercial properties or empty lots that are just thrown in and.
And we also need to talk about the tax stabilization policy again, that needs to be revisited this year.
Needs to be more doable.
It either needs to be scrapped, we didn't use it, we had somebody come in and ask for it and we didn't use it. So it either needs to be taken out of the binder.
I, I thought it was, I thought it, we're waiting for their assessment this April, right?
Are we?
I thought we, that's where we left it.
That's what I thought.
Okay, all right, then I'm wrong, I'm wrong.
I thought, this is just the way I.
But I.
Thought it went, if, if the assessment was way over what their assessment is now.
Okay.
That's where we're gonna talk stabilization.
All right.
All right?
Yeah, I, I thought.
This point to the.
You're right, from where they are now and then what they're gonna be.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Of course, if they're not done.
But there must be.
In a month, which doesn't look like they're gonna be, but.
All right, this, I remember this, this is the conversation we had, how do you come up with that number before? You can't do it until you have an appraisal.
Till you have an appraisal.
Well, the assessors go out, the listers go out.
They're out now.
That might be, to, to your point too.
Anyway, I think we should talk.
Another way, it might be something for the Economic Development Committee to tackle a, look at and possibly rewrite of the tax stabilization. Cause I have someone who applied and had some personal experience, and we might be able to do something. If you'd like as a, as a board to give us.
Yeah, that'd be great.
All right. That's all I got.
Um, I talked to you about Shaw's parking lot, there's a.
It was in Shaw's parking lot?
Yeah, what did I say?
Uh, I don't remember, but that, that's what he's talking about, is water in Shaw's.
There's the puddle?
I don't know, it, it's a big heave, it's a big heave on the, on the north corner, it may be, you know, somebody is wondering if the, if the, there's water leaking and it's just leaking right into their, their drain. Thought we should look, just to make sure.
Where they puddle that snow?
Yeah, yeah, but it's.
Going to the south on, tried to drive through there.
The south, the south side, that corner, there's a big crack, just check it out.
Moves quick, but anyway.
Um, the, the Adam Street substation, can you guys get, I had to work your way into getting it, the, the roof is all covered with moss, the, you know, it's kind of beat up a little bit, if there's, if you, if you get, it doesn't have to be tomorrow, but I mean, if, you guys, just take a look at it, it looks like a little bit of maintenance will make that go a long way. You know, it just, it's a, and then the last one I got is, uh, um, the computers for the listers.
Yeah, I forgot to bring, thank you. Yeah, so the, the listers sent an email to the board saying that, um, they were upset or frustrated about the timeframe for the computers being installed. And they're right, it has taken a long time. We did, I did try, I, I brought in a, a different IT guy thinking it might accelerate the process, it didn't, he wasn't familiar with our system and it actually slowed us down. The morning that email came out, I had already contacted our current IT guy, and he's already set up to come up board and take care of it. Yeah, it's moving slow, but, but we're moving.
Yeah, as long as we're, as long as we can get that going, I mean, this is their busy time, they're also talking about the move, if they're gonna move or if they're gonna. Didn't we talk about putting them in your old office or something at one point?
I think they were.
No, we, we moved them, we moved them out of the closet there and put them in Phil's office.
Oh, okay.
They have three times as much room as they did.
Okay.
Yeah, that's why I couldn't figure out why they sit in any places to sit down.
Yeah, okay.
In the email.
You're right, you're right, I forgot about that.
Yeah, I, yeah.
I think they're using the old computer in the closet still.
No, everything's been, I don't, we, we really upgraded that service, it's, which we really needed, at the lister's office was in that closet with one computer and you couldn't work in there, so it, it's a much better situation.
Okay.
Leave it alone.
I, I stopped in and talked to Sharon for the meeting, and we're, they, they've got one computer that's already hooked up and running, and the other two, they're, they're, they're all, they're there.
Well, that's a sure sign of the squeaky wheel getting oil, that's fine, that's the way it works. Okay, uh, let's move on. Financial.
Uh, checkbook, one million, six hundred eighty five thousand, nine hundred sixteen dollars and seven cents. Motion to pay the payroll warrant, thirty thousand, eight hundred forty three dollars and thirty three cents.
Second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
All right, those opposed?
Motion to pay the general fund warrant, one hundred seventeen thousand, four hundred dollars and ninety eight cents.
I'll second that, but isn't there some things on there?
I didn't look at it yet, I need to just.
There's, there's.
The sure.
Keep paying extra payments.
Okay.
I think there's a payment to the rescue squad.
As you go through.
There are three items on the posting note.
Either before the meeting or during the meeting, just plow through that and you'll see that there's two different folders.
Yeah, Blue Cross Insurance, fifteen, anybody can do this if they want. Uh, library, must be there, appropriation, twenty one, part, look the quarter in there.
There must be a quarter.
Quarter, yeah.
Twenty one thousand, four hundred twenty five, and the rescue squad, twelve thousand, nine sixty seven, so it's fifty thousand extra.
Or that's at least the highlights.
That's the highlights, yeah.
You got a second?
You have a second, that's all right.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
All those opposed?
Thank you.
Get that checkbook. Okay, the only thing else we have is a.
Motion to go into executive session.
Yeah, quick, quick executive session.
You want a motion for that?
Yeah.
I'll make motion to go into executive session, personnel, one, BSA, three thirteen, A three.